It's okay. Good evening and welcome to the September twenty-third, twenty-twenty-one meeting of the Prince George's County Board of Education. Before we begin, I would like to ask everyone to turn off any wireless communication devices to avoid interfering with our meeting. Before we begin, I would also like you'd like to let you know that we will be using Zoom's Spanish interpretation services this evening. Please listen to the following announcement regarding interpretation services during tonight's meeting. Would you please play the recording? Thank you.
Interpreting Services, Servicios de Interpretación. Simultaneous interpretation is available in Spanish. La interpretación simultánea está disponible en español. On a computer at the bottom of the screen will be an interpretation globe. Click that globe and then select Spanish. En una computadora, en la parte baja de la pantalla habrá un globo de interpretación. Haga clic en ese globo y seleccione Spanish. On a mobile device at the bottom of the screen, tap the ellipses icon on the bottom right. Three dots. Tap Language Interpretation. Tap Spanish. En un dispositivo móvil, en la parte baja de la pantalla, toca el icono de elipses en la parte baja de la derecha. Dos tres puntos. Toque Language Interpretation. Toque Spanish. Thank you. Gracias.
Thank you, gracias. This meeting is being recorded for those who cannot observe now. And information on how to view this and other meetings of the board will be posted on our board webpage. Board member Stafford, I mean, board member Adam Stafford, would you please lead us in board prayer and pledge allegiance?
Okay. Please bow your heads. Oh God, we pray to administer that which is just in all educational policies. Being ever mindful of your guidance, steer us to action with love, wisdom, and understanding. Amen. And now for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now have our roll call. Board members, please unmute your microphones for roll call. Ms. Berkeley, please call the roll.
Yes, ma'am. Stafford?
Here.
Mrs. Emmett?
Here.
Ms. Boozer Struthers?
Here.
Mr. Burrows?
Here.
Mr. Saran Ruiz?
Here.
Mr. Harris? Mrs. Mickens? I got you, Mr. Harris. Mrs. Murray?
Here.
Mr. Montero?
Here.
Mr. Murray? Mrs. Queen?
Present.
Mr. Thomas?
Here.
Mr. Valentine?
Present.
Mrs. Williams?
Present.
And Dr. Miller?
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have established a quorum. We will now move to the adoption of the agenda for today, September twenty-third, twenty-twenty-one board meeting. May I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved?
It has been moved in second to adopt today's agenda. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any nays? I mean abstentions. The motion to adopt the agenda passes. Next, approval of board meeting minutes for September second, twenty-twenty-one, the boardwork session, and September ninth, the CIP public hearing minutes. May I have a motion to approve those minutes?
I move that we approve the meeting minutes from September second, twenty-twenty-one, and the boardworks, the CIP meeting on September ninth, twenty-twenty-one.
Is there a second?
Second.
Did someone give a second?
Yes, a second.
Okay. Thank you. Is there any discussion about the minutes? If there's no, if there's no hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Madam Chair, we, I'm sorry to interrupt, Madam Chair, we have one hand that has been raised.
Board member Mickens Murray?
Yes, I, I noticed that my name is not included in the board members present on the September ninth. So I, I would like to have my name to show present. So I guess I need to amend it or something?
Yes, amend the motion to.
I need to amend the motion to have my name included in the board members present on the September ninth agenda.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It has been moved to amend the September ninth, it was the September ninth, correct? September ninth agenda, I mean, minutes to include board member Mickens, Judy Mickens Murray's name.
As being present.
As being present. Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing, hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. The ayes have it and the minutes are adopted. We'll move on to the report of the chair. At this point, I would like to have a moment of silence. Colleagues, at this time, I ask that you all join me in honoring the memory of the following PG CPS students, staff, and family members with a moment of silence. Talia Campbell, student, High Point High School. Peyton P.J. Evans, student, Thomas Pulling, K-8 Creative and Performing Arts School. Terrell Peters, student, C Elizabeth Reek's Regional Center. Kyrie K. Duval, student, Dr. Henry Wise, Junior High School. Janaya Smalls, student, Chilum Elementary School. Kimberly Hancock, teacher, Thomas Stone Elementary. Please continue to keep these families in your thoughts and prayers. And please check our webpage for information about upcoming board meetings. The next public meeting of the board will be held Thursday, October fourteenth, twenty-twenty-one, which will be a boardwork session. And on Thursday, October twenty-eighth, it will be another board meeting. We will now move, I have some comments for the general public. The board has appointed or selected a general, a legal counsel to represent the board on, for appeals only. And the public needs to be aware that we're still in the process of looking for permanent legal counsel. Let's see. And I think that's it.
Madam Chair, I think you also wanted to provide some information about the board retreat.
Oh, I knew something else. Well, okay, well, we are, the board, and thanks to the leadership of board member Sheila Adams Stafford for coordinating the retreat, which will be held on Saturday, October second. And even though we will start with an open session of the retreat, the remainder of the retreat will be in executive session. So we wanted to let the public know that on October second, we will be convening at the Doubletree Hotel, beginning at nine a.m. And I think I'll let our chairperson for that speak to any details. Board member Adam Stafford?
Yes, thank you so much. So we will be convening as a board for our annual retreat. And I'd also like to thank board member Judy Mickens Murray for working with me on planning the retreat. We have scheduled a mediator in our goals for this retreat. We will be working towards establishing some norms for our public meetings in addition to participating in remediation. So I'd like to thank those who have been helpful in planning the retreat, and thank you, Dr. Miller, as well.
Thank you, Miss, Board Member Adam Stafford. And thank you, Board Member Vice Chair Williams, for keeping me on track. So with that, next, we will have the report of the Chief Executive Officer, Dr. Golson. If you would, please present your report.
Good evening. As you know, school bus transportation continues to be a challenge as we face a local and national shortage of bus drivers. Please know we're working very hard behind the scenes to find solutions. I do want to take this opportunity, though, to thank the one hundred people that submitted applications for our recent job fair held last week for bus drivers. And we just had a class of thirteen future drivers complete our paid training program and are now waiting to take their CDL test with MVA. Our next virtual job fair is Wednesday, September twenty-ninth. With the second highest salary in Maryland, we share hope you will consider joining the PG CPS professional family. As shared last week, all middle and high school students may ride the bus operated by Prince George's County for free with their student ID. In addition, we will be offering evening training classes for current employees who have voiced the need to assist us, as well as contact our retirees to see if they will rejoin us while we work our transportation driver shortage solutions. I sincerely apologize for the delays, the inconvenience, and the stress this has caused for our families. We will continue to find non-traditional ways to close this gap, which in turn will make life better for our students and their families. PG CPS is celebrating Hispanic Heritage Month from September fifteenth to October fifteenth. Students will take part in curriculum and activities that recognize the contributions of inspirational Hispanic Americans. I will be hosting a Hispanic Heritage Month Telephone Town Hall on Thursday, September thirtieth. Details are available on our PG CPS website at www.pgcps.org. I encourage students and staff members to share photos of celebrations on social media using the hashtag PGCPSProud. Starting Monday, we will begin random pool COVID-19 testing of students regardless of symptoms and vaccination status. Parents and guardians are required to provide consent prior to testing. Additionally, proof of vaccination for all student athletes over age twelve will be required for participation in all sports and is due by Friday, October fifteenth. Unvaccinated individuals will be required to undergo weekly testing starting the week of October eighteen. I have received lots of emails concerning what students should do for schoolwork when they have been asked to quarantine. Any student group, any student or group of students who need to quarantine as a result of direct exposure to someone who has tested positive for COVID-19 will continue to have access to Google Classroom or Canvas. Students will have access to synchronous, which means not live instruction, through videos, assignments, presentations, and their online texts. They will also have access to grade and content-specific online learning platforms that will allow them to review and develop core academic skills. For an entire class that is quarantined, the students will move to synchronous, which is live virtual learning. Granted that the teacher is well and not ill. If the teacher is not well and a substitute or staff member is available to teach the class, that class will resume virtually. Each school will design its own personalized instructional plan for those students who are individually quarantined. Updated and detailed information will be placed in the Safe Return to In-Person Instruction and Continuity of Services Guide, which is placed on our PG CPS main webpage. Please also note, the students have access to a digital device that they will utilize while in school or at home. Additionally, students can access their textbooks, instructional software through our clever platform. And just so that people know, the clever platform is our school's digital sign-in for resources, textbooks, intervention, messages, and any other tools, the instructional tools that they need to support them. Students can log on to Access Clever using their traditional PG CPS login information. Class of two thousand twenty-two members, I am sure you're wondering what will happen with homecoming, prom, and graduation. I ask for your patience as we work through recommendations from our local health department and medical experts on what is the best way to support you and your families during these joyous occasions. Further information will be forthcoming. And lastly, I just want to extend my heartfelt gratitude to all members of the Prince George's County Public School community for your hard work and patience during these first three weeks of school. I know that it has definitely not been easy, but together, you will keep moving forward. Thank you, and this concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Golson. And again, I'd like to reiterate thanks to the public and parents and our scholars for your patience and working together to make sure we have a successful school year. And the board supports the efforts of our Chief Executive Officer. Thank you. Now we will move into the introduction of committee members and committee charges. Oh, Board Member Adam Stafford?
Thank you, and thank you, Dr. Golson, for your report. I was wondering, well, thank you for sharing what we're doing in terms of random testing for students. I know that so many families have reached out to us around that, so I want to thank you and the administration for that. I wanted to see if you all were also considering the use of rapid tests, or if you all had heard any sort of suggestions around that in terms of helping to reduce the amount of time students are on quarantine, and if that was something that you all were thinking about or considering at all.
Based on the feedback that we've received from the local health department, they would prefer that we continue with the PCR testing that we're currently using. After doing staff this past week, we were able to receive results very quickly. So we will continue down that path. And as shared in closed session, we'll be sending out information once we continue with further consultation with our local health department around potential of having a revised quarantine timeframe. But once that information has been finalized, we will share it. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Golson. Board Member Harris?
Hi, Chair Miller. Thanks for acknowledging me. Sorry, I can't have my camera on. My bandwidth isn't strong enough. My connection will probably fall out. Question for Dr. Golson, is there a timeframe where we can expect a COVID dashboard, or should we expect a COVID dashboard of some sort?
We already have one posted on our PG CPS webpage. I'll be glad to provide it to you in your email. Just so you know, it is the top three most frequently visited sites by our students, parents, and community members. I'll provide you that link.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Any other questions, concerns, or comments for Dr. Golson? Thank you. Then we will move on to the committee members and committee charge. Operations, Budget, and Fiscal Affairs Committee, better known as.
Hey, Dr., sorry, Dr. Miller, you've got one more, one more question in the queue.
Yeah, but he raised his hand after I started, so I didn't see it. Thank you. Number.
Yeah, thank you very much.
For Dr. Golson?
Yes, it is just actually a question. I was actually just trying to, I was just trying to open up my laptop here so I can join from my computer. My question is in regards to the transportation challenges that have happened over the last few weeks. And I know, obviously, there are a myriad of reasons why this has taken place, and I know that there is a national bus driver shortage, and that's contributed to this. But I was hoping to hear from the CEO during her report about this. So I just wanted to ask if there's anything that, any updates that you can share with us and the community about what might be happening as it relates to transportation?
I actually did include it in the very first two paragraphs of my opening statement. I'll be glad to provide it to you in writing. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Golson. Any other comments before we move on to the committees? Okay, then we are now have Board Member Belinda Queen, the Chair of Operations, Budget, and Fiscal Affairs Committee, please introduce the committee's recommendations.
Okay. Many Charles, okay.
Actually, sorry, Madam Chair, this agenda, this item is to introduce the committee to the public for this year, and then the two-ten is the recommendation from the Obama Committee.
Okay. I apologize. Okay, Board Member Queen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate it. Good evening to everyone, to all of my, to board members, my colleagues, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, and definitely to all of our stakeholders. I am Belinda Queen. I'm the Chair of the Operation Budget and Fiscal Affairs Committee. I'm going to introduce our committee members. Again, I am the Chair. I represent District Six. My vice chair is Board Member Kenneth Harris, and he represents District Seven. Mr. Harris?
How you doing? Sorry, I'm here.
Yes. Our members of the committee is Board Member Boozer Strugler, and she represents District Three. And of course, our Madam Chair of the Board, Dr. Miller, she is a member of our chair. She's one of our elected board, appointed board members. And then the last, but not the least, is Board Member David Murray, and he represents District One. Okay. So in saying that, the committee charge is to review and make recommendations to the full board to meet the vision, goals, and strategy objective of our stakeholders in a transparent and collaborative manner. The general charge of the committee is the Operation Budget and Fiscal Affairs Committee is charged on behalf of the board with the oversight of issues involving school system operation, budget, and fiscal affairs. The committee is responsible for reviewing issues pertaining to the management and audit of functions in the Prince George's County Public School System, reviewing and providing recommendations regarding physical, capital, and human resources, including the board operation budget, the capital improvement, staffing plans, and allegations. The Board of Education Director of Internal Audit shall attend the meeting of this standing committee. Specifically, the committee will review financial statements provided to the board when, monthly, review budget alignments, realignments, and transfer requests provided monthly, and specifically show how the modification reflects on the previous approved budget. Ensure that the board summary statements are complete and that appropriate attachments are provided. Ensure equity is done in all budgetary matters, including in our CIP, while we organize, we organize, we, by recognizing priority needs in the school district. Promote community participation before the final adoption of the budget. Monitor corrective action plans, persistent reporting, finding, and recommendations, last but not least, to serve to the best of our abilities. That is our charge.
Thank you, Board Member Queen. Next, we will have Policy and Governance Committee introductions. Board Member Edward Burrows is the Chair of that committee.
Good evening, colleagues and members of the public. The Policy and Governance Committee has two recommendations tonight. The Policy and Governance Committee met virtually on September fourteenth, twenty-twenty-one with the following members in attendance, myself, Committee Vice Chair Rahila Ahmed, Board Members Judy Mickens Murray, and Board Member Sonya Williams, also a committee member, Alvaro Serrano Ruiz. The committee reviewed and discussed proposed revisions to Policy zero-one-one-eight. The purpose of Policy zero-one-one-eight basic commitments is to define the guiding principles by which all activities at the board will be undertaken. The committee voted unanimously to recommend the policy be placed on the agenda for the September twenty-third board meeting with the recommendation that the draft rise policy be approved for public comment period of no less than two weeks in accordance to Board Policy ninety-three forty. Board Member Ahmed also requested that the Office of General Counsel review her recommendations and her recommendation that citizenship status be added as a protected class in this policy. And if feasible, the committee will discuss its inclusion once the policy comes back after public comment. And so on behalf of the committee, I move to send out zero-one-one-eight basic commitments for public comment for a two-week period.
Any comments, questions? Thank you, Board Member Burrows. So this will be posted on, this will be posted, am I correct?
Yes.
Point of order, Madam Chair, we have to take a vote.
But, oh, right.
Board Member Mickens Murray?
One, I have a question for Chair.
It's my computer, or I'm not getting.
Question for me?
I have a question for you.
Understood.
Maybe I misunderstood, but I thought you said you were, we were posting it for two weeks. I thought it was a minimum of two weeks. I think we need to get.
It's, the, the exact wording is no less than two weeks.
Okay, thanks.
What, is that it? Board Member Murray?
Yes.
Board Member Valentine?
I just wanted to highlight to everyone that both of them were voted on unanimously. Chair Burrows?
Yes, are you asking that I combined it instead of doing both?
No, no, I just want to reiterate to the public.
Yeah.
On the, I'm just reading, so that people understand, based on the committee composition, that there was unanimity and all.
Absolutely. Thank you, Board Member Valentine, for pointing out that our committee comes together often in a unanimous fashion. We work very well together. We have seamless meetings, and we're very united. So I want to thank all the committee members. We're going to keep that up for the rest of the time that we're together. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member. Is there a second to Board Member Burrows' motion? It has been moved in second that we accept the recommendation from the, from the Policy and Governance Committee regarding the revisions to Policy zero-one-one-eight basic commitments and Policy zero-one-two-five nondiscrimination.
Oh.
Any discussion?
Madam Chair, I haven't read zero-one-two-five nondiscrimination, if you.
So we're just doing zero-one-one-eight?
I can read, I can add to the motion right now, if you would prefer us to take one vote on both of them.
How would you prefer? You're the chairperson. Would you prefer a vote on each one or both of them?
If there's no objection, I'm happy to do them both at the same time.
Okay.
All right. The Policy and Governance Committee met virtually on September fourteenth, twenty-twenty-one with the following members in attendance, Edward Burrows, Committee Chair Rahila Ahmed, Committee Vice Chair Judy Mickens Murray, Sonya Williams, and Alvaro Serrano Ruiz. Dr. Miller attended as an executive member of the committee. The committee reviewed and discussed proposed policy revisions to zero-one-two-five. The purpose of Policy zero-one-two-five nondiscrimination is to affirm that the Board of Education's commitment to promote an environment for students, employees, and the entire PG CPS community that is free from discrimination and to designate which offices are responsible for handling inquiries regarding this nondiscrimination policy. The committee voted unanimously to recommend that the policy be placed on the agenda for the September twenty-third board meeting with the recommendation that the draft rise policy be approved for public comment for a period of no less than two weeks in accordance with Board Policy ninety-three forty. Board Member Ahmed also requested that the Office of General Counsel review her recommendation that citizenship status be added as a protected class in this policy. And if permissible, the committee will discuss its inclusion once the policy comes back after public comment. And so I'd like to move both of those on behalf of the committee, because it's being moved on behalf of the committee, no second is required.
And here, is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Abstentions? I keep getting this message that my internet is unstable, so if you can't hear me, please raise your hand. Thank you.
And Vice Chair, I believe she went out.
No abstentions? All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it, the motion passed. Now we will move to public comment. I didn't understand you. Board Member Williams, did you say something? Now we will move to public comment. I didn't understand you. Board Member Williams, did you say something?
No, ma'am.
Oh, okay, thank you. Uh, public comment, uh, colleagues, we have fifteen registered live public comment speakers this evening. And I'd like to note to the public comment speakers, you have been registered to speak in a public forum where the Board of Education will listen to your comments. The board will not address your comments. You must speak on the topic for which you have been registered. All registered speakers will have three minutes to provide comments. At the sound of the buzzer, speakers may complete that sentence only. Registered speakers may not relinquish any part of their speaking time to another registered or unregistered, uh, uh, unregistered speaker. Speakers may not address individuals or issues with profanity or derogatory terms. You will be warned once. If you continue, your comments will be muted and you may be asked to leave the meeting. Speakers are encouraged to use titles rather than names, for example, principal, CEO, deputy superintendent, et cetera. Your adherence to these guidelines will enable the public participation process to move smoothly. Our first registered speaker for tonight is the Honorable Denny Tavarez, Prince George's County Council, uh, District Two Northern Area High.
Is, uh, the Honorable Denny Tavarez available? Is she on the site? Ms. Berkeley? Mr. Cooper, do you?
Berkeley, she was having tech issues, and so my message is they move to come back to public comment when she gets back on, because she's having issues with her computer.
So we're going to move from the public and go to the consent agenda? Is that what you're suggesting?
Uh, yes, ma'am. Uh, again, she's having technical issues with her computer. She texted me, and so she's trying to restart and come back on, but at this moment, she's not on the call.
Okay, someone else just came in. She's back.
She's returning.
My apologies, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
We will, I think we should give her a couple of minutes to get situated, and we'll come back after the consent agenda items.
Okay, so we're going to move to consent agenda. Dr. Goldson, would you please introduce items, uh, number four point one through point four point seven?
I sure will. Items four point one through four point seven requires approval of proclamations commemorating World Space Week, National Day of Rising, Read for the Record Day, National Hunger and Homeless Awareness Week, Red Ribbon, Ribbon Week, National Bullying Prevention Month, and International Conflict Resolution Day.
May I have a motion to accept the consent agenda items?
Did you read four point seven, Dr. Goldson? Because I didn't hear it.
I read them all, and Board, and Board Vice Chair was moving forward.
Thank you. What, uh, Vice Chair, would you take over? I'm having internet problems.
Sure, no problem. It's been moved and properly seconded. Are there any discussions? Seeing none? All in favor? Any opposition? Any abstentions? The ayes have it. This motion has passed. Uh, Ms. Berkeley, are you ready to return back to public comment?
Thank you so much, Madam Vice Chair. Yes, ma'am, I pulled over the first two public commenters.
Okay. First up is the honorable. The first step is the honorable Denny Tavarez, Prince George's County Council, District Two Northern Area High School.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much, uh, Madam Vice Chair, and to all the illustrious, uh, body of the school board. I write to you in strong support of the Adelphi overcrowding relief plan that will, uh, build the new area, um, Northern Area High School. Uh, and with that, I just want to ask for your strong support of this, but it's not just this school. We're talking also about the Adelphi Middle, which is well underway, as you know, has been already demolished. Help rebuild High Point, uh, alleviate the overcrowding there as well as Northwestern, as well as Parkdale. Um, we're also working to, uh, build the International High School at Langley Park, which should also not be forgotten, and expand the middle school, the Hyattville Middle School, which has also been demolished, and include the Hyattville, uh, um, elementary school. And I also respectfully request the Phase Two schools to also not be left off the radar, Langley Park McCormick Elementary, Hyatt, uh, Elementary, Thomas Stone Elementary, and Nicholas Orm. With that, I've been before you these last seven years, at this time, every one of those seven years, to ask for your support of this proposal, and now we are at this juncture. I cannot tell you how excited I am, and I hope you feel the same excitement that I do in ensuring that we seek to reduce educational disparities, language, uh, increase language access, and address cultural barriers so that we can give a chance to the most vulnerable children and youth in our county and making sure that our twenty-five hundred kids without a seat all have access to a seat and shown the due respect that they reserve. So with that, as you may know, um, Council District Two is the most overcrowded district in Prince George's County. It has the largest population of Latinos, immigrants, and low-income families who are often rendered powerless when big decisions are made that will affect their future and the status of their vulnerable communities in our county for the next generation. And many of our local schools continue to be at dangerous levels of overcrowding, including some of these schools I named that are at a, at a hundred fifty percent overcapacity and the middle schools that, and several school, other schools that are a hundred and twenty-five percent overcapacity. And we know how overwhelmed our teachers are by being put to, in force to shoulder this problem of having to deal with these severely overcrowded schools and large classrooms. So overcrowded classrooms exacts our bait, educational inequities, which can lead to early dropouts, unintended pregnancies, being vulnerable to gang recruitment, disconnection with school community, substance abuse, and other high-risk behaviors that can continue to a cycle of poverty for generations to come. So with that, I ask you to please help us help these children break the cycle of poverty. And I just want to ask again for your support, um, of this proposal, and I would love to, to say, I have, just for an FYI, I did speak before, um, television cameras today on the transportation issue um, in recommending that some of the things that you are already implementing. And, um, I'm happy to see that you have decided to follow through with using school IDs for, uh, uh, use on transit. We hope that we could expand it to Wamara as well, as, and also as gaining commitment on individuals that are trained by us to be forced to commit to us for a certain period of time and in the interim to also request the governor to, um, execute the National Guard to step in to alleviate this bus driver shortage. And in the case that these, um, National Guards are unable to, because they're committed to helping with the vaccine rollout, I urge us to do a mutual aid agreement with other states to be able to provide those drivers from other National Guard entities for us to be able to alleviate, at least for the, these upcoming weeks until we can roll out these, uh, class, um, graduating classes that you just finished mentioning in your report, Madam CEO. And with that, I congratulate you on the good work and the rollout. And to you all, thank you so much, and I hope to hear great things from this board. Uh, thank you all.
Thank you, Councilwoman Tavarez, Vice Chair of Tavarez at that. Our next speaker is the Honorable Brianna Urbina, Councilmember for the City of New Carrollton on Transportation.
Good evening. I am coming to you as a council member, but most importantly, as a mother of a child with special needs who takes transportation because they are a child with special needs. This morning, my son's bus was forty minutes late, and I was, he was very stressed. I was very stressed, and I didn't know what to do. I pride myself on being somebody who's a little bit more sophisticated than the average parent, connected to resources, connected to community, and I did not know how to help my child this morning. Since the school year has started, I've sent him to school in an Uber twice. He is fourteen years old, so he is not old enough to be in an Uber by himself, but that's the choice that we had to make to get him to school because the bus simply didn't come. Um, this causes a lot of stress to my child, and it's just incredibly disruptive to his day and to all the teachers at the Chelsea School, which is a non-public school that serves students with special needs here in Prince George's County. Um, when I called a, a friend of mine, another parent at Chelsea School, she said, forty minutes? What are you complaining about? My daughter was an hour and ten minutes la- week, late last week. When I spoke to another friend, a parent at Akakeek Middle School, he said, an hour and ten minutes? My daughter was an hour and thirty minutes late to school two weeks ago, and I have now since taken her off the bus, and I am driving her and leaving my ten-year-old home alone, who is doing her virtual learning in order to get my child to school on time and have the other child attending class virtually. This is just not acceptable, and I know that the district is working hard to address this issue and that this is a na- national issue and not just a local issue, but for children with special needs who cannot use public transportation and for families who are not able to get their kids to school via an expensive Uber or taking them to school by themselves, this is just not acceptable. It has a huge ripple effect on the day that these children have going forward. And so I'm, I'm grateful to, uh, the Honorable Denny Tavarez for recommending that the governor employ, uh, deploy the National Guard to address this issue, and I would ask that special education students be put at the top of that list for, um, students who are going to get transported to school. I voiced all of my, my woes on Facebook this morning because I didn't have any other place to go. I didn't know who to talk to. I talked to the Secretary at Chelsea, I talked to these two other parents, and thankfully, uh, Board Member Shayla Adams Stafford told me to come here and tell you guys. So I know that you're aware of the problem, and maybe forty minutes isn't as concerning as my friend's daughter who walked two blocks away from the house and then called her dad at nine-thirty when the bus still hadn't come, and he assumed she was in school. Maybe it's not as bad as the hour and ten minutes of, of my son's classmate, but it's, it's a big deal for our family, and, and it's something that, uh, wasn't happening until the start of the mainstream PGCPS kids. When, uh, Chelsea School starts before, um, the PGCPS school calendar, so the first couple of weeks of our school year, we didn't have any late buses. Once, uh, there were more kids coming into school, now we're, the bus is late every day. And, and the, the range of times that it comes makes it very difficult for our families to get adjusted in the morning. So I know this is on your plate, that you're paying attention to this issue. I just ask that you take the utmost concern for how this is affecting families of children with special needs who do not have any other alternative to get to school but to wait for a late bus. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Hon- the, uh, Honorable Brianna Urbina. Next will be Michelle Clark, Individual Transportation.
Good evening, everybody. Uh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, perfect. Um, hello to everybody. Uh, it's good to see the, the school board together again and, uh, our CEO and everybody else who's watching tonight. It's interesting that the previous caller was talking about buses and special education students because I just so happen to be a teacher at an early childhood center, and that was a major part of what I wanted to say. Everybody realizes there's a bus driver shortage. We know that there are late buses. But please, please try to prioritize our special education students because they do not understand why they're waiting, and they can be throwing fits and everything else for their parents if they're waiting to be picked up in the morning, and they will be throwing fits in the afternoon if the buses are late picking them up. And we're not just talking a little bit late. Um, my, one of my students hasn't arrived to school less than forty minutes late since he started on the bus. And he's a special needs student. It's very difficult for him, and it sets his day off in the worst way and causes a lot of difficulty for him. It's, it's almost causing trauma for some of these children simply by having to wait. So please look at, uh, trying, I know we're not going to fix the whole bus situation, but please try and make it better for the special education students because they just really don't get it. Also, I've read the Back to Work Guidelines, and I saw on page thirteen, it stated that fully vaccinated staff who have had a COVID exposure are not required to provide a return-to-work document. But I can also tell you that I and many other employees in my building have told, have been told after a possible exposure that we have to go and get a PCR COVID test. And we're not being barred from the building, but we're still required to get the test. I know the school system's providing a whole lot of testing for a whole lot of folks. If you're going to require us to get the test, either give us time off to get it or provide the testing for us so that we don't have to go on our own time to do it. One of my best friends called me and said she ran into a teacher on Saturday at a, a pharmacy who is in tears, breaking down because of the stress after a COVID exposure and trying to get a test. I went last Thursday. I couldn't get a ta- I, I couldn't even get an appointment at CVS or Walgreens until Saturday. So I had to go through the health department and wait in the line on a day when I technically wasn't working. So asking, we know that people aren't vaccinated. Please make sure that, that the rest of us, if we're required to get tested, are covered also. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Michelle Clark. Next up is Timothy Meyer, Mount Rainier. Elementary School PTA vaccines mandate.
Thank you. I'm Timothy Meyer, President of Mount Rainier Elementary PTO, here to talk about vaccines and COVID safety. First, let's keep some perspective. This isn't Florida or Texas. We are largely debating which mitigation strategies to implement and what degree of caution to exercise, not whether to sit back, pretend a pandemic doesn't exist, and do nothing at all. From the start, PGCPS and Dr. Goldson have followed science and public health data and erred on the side of safety. Dr. Goldson has made the right calls, been transparent about the metrics guiding her decision process, and put the health and safety of PG, of the PGCPS community first. Let's keep pandemic decision-making where it belongs, in her hands. She has earned that level of trust. Yet even with all these precautions, COVID continues to wreak havoc. At least two hundred six reported cases in the first two weeks of school alone. The reality is that all the public safety measures in the world will not overcome this pandemic. There's one way forward: vaccinate, vaccinate, vaccinate. The staff vaccination mandate was a good start. The student athlete mandate for those twelve and up is another positive step. Now that we have FDA approval for at least one vaccine, let's work to expand that mandate to include all age-eligible students. I'll take it one step further. As the parent of an elementary school student, that two elementary school students, as soon as there is an FDA-approved, widely-available vaccine for younger students, here is some preemptive public support for a full vaccine mandate for them too. Please vaccinate my children. Mandate mass for them for as long as it takes. The earth is not flat. This pandemic is real, and we can't attempt to appease those who would pretend otherwise. These mandates don't infringe on my children's freedom or on mine as a parent. They keep all of us safer. Period. I'll close by saying that the role of a PTO leader has evolved a lot this past year and a half. It's not just monthly meetings, bake sales, and planning teacher appreciation events anymore. It's about the daily wait and a lot of sleepless nights worrying about keeping your school community safe. That's why I'm here tonight, because keeping, because keeping my school family safe depends on all of us. Not most of us, all of us, getting vaccinated as quickly as possible. And if that takes mandates, you all have my support. you all have my support one hundred percent. Thank you.
Thank you, Timothy Meyer. Next up is Erica, Erica Coville, Covelli. Individual on Transportation and Meals.
Good evening. I am a concerned parent. My child has been assigned two buses and neither have provided viable modes of transportation. I am aware of the bus shortage. However, there should be alternatives for parents other than, I'm sorry, we are doing the best that we can. It is my understanding that tax dollars do support a public education, which in PG County does include transportation. How can my son gain access to a free and public education if he cannot safely and timely access the school building? I am also told I can use an Uber, hire transportation service, pay for before and after care. All of these are expensive options transferred to the parent but are the result of the county's failure to plan for the bus shortage. In addition, I am also working daily, which impacts my professional responsibilities as I am a special educator who is now robbing my students of their access to a free and public education. If monies are not being used to pay bus drivers, then transportation stipends should be available to parents for students who are without a bus driver. This is an example of equity. If the money isn't going to the bus drivers, then it needs to go to a driver somewhere because the bus issue impacts more than just one child. And being that, again, I am a special educator, if my principal says that I have to be at eight-thirty and be at my job at eight-thirty, I cannot drop my son off until nine fifteen. By the time I drop off my child and then get to my school, it's now ten AM. Well, if the school day at my school starts at nine AM, I'm not walking through the door until ten AM, then that means that my special edu- educated babies, they're missing an hour of instruction Monday through Friday. There is a certain amount of instructional time that is mandatory by law for all students. And right now I am not providing that because I'm sitting at my son's school at nine fifteen waiting to drop him off and then trying to get to work. So it's just ineffective. So if we're not going to spend the monies that we need for the bus drivers because they're not available, then those monies still need to be given out to people who are driving at some point so that everyone is not impacted. Because the shortage of buses are not just impacting the one special education child. They're impacting all kids, all families, and other kids in other school districts as well. I would lastly like to close by saying thank you to Mr. David Murray. Thank you to Ms. Belinda Queen, who took the time to respond to me as I did email every school board member. And I did not get a response with the exception of these two individuals, which made me feel invisible. And I'm thinking that this body is here to support. Dr. Monica Golson took the time to email me, not once but twice. But other school board members did not, with the exception again of David Murray I want to lift up and Belinda Queen. With that, I close.
Thank you, Ms. Covelli. Next up is Gina Bowler, Individual Recommendation for Transportation Office to Improve Communication with Parents and Guardians During the Bus Driver Shortage.
Hello. Um, thank you for the opportunity to comment. I have, um, two daughters in the Spanish immersion program. One a fifth grader at Overlookful Spanish Immersion School, the other a seventh grader at Kettering Middle School. I have two recommendations. One is for the Transportation Department in hall meetings. The second recommendation is to update the frequently patient department's website. Speak a little bit more about each recommendation. Um, use Zoom or a similar platform that's recorded for public acts within twenty-four hours and made available for specified number of days. Plan the meeting spirit of partnership. Community, particularly the parents and guardians. You want to fill the gap during the bus driver shortage. Feature a slide presentation by transportation leadership. Designate time for questions and answers prepared in advance as well as questions raised during the meeting. Consider or similar topics for presentations and questions and answers. Describe to address the bus driver shortage and the status of your progress or lack thereof. Um, let us know whether this plan will accommodate even more going to school in person once they're eligible with a COVID vaccination. It's the Transportation Department by permanent bus assignments versus temporary so that parents and guardians know what to expect. Um, in other words, do temporary assignments in neutrality mean buses coming for our child? Or two or three hours late? What you're doing to improve customer service in areas like answering the phone, responding to, resolving issues through the transportation resolution system, sending, uh, the finder and actually changing bus assignments from temporary to permanent. Regarding the free questions and answers, add them so that they add questions that actually can address our questions through specific shortage and the request for us, parents and guardians, to fill the gap. Consider these are similar questions. What is a permanent assignment compared to a temporary one? What's similar and dissimilar? Why does my child have a temporary bus assignment instead of a permanent one? What already leveled does my child have for receiving a permanent bus assignment? How will I be notified of a change in my child's bus assignment from temporary to permanent? If I submit a transportation resolution system regarding a temporary bus assignment, when can I update your resolution? Up to how many excuse absences can my child have due to lack of transportation for getting to school? And I have not received my email invitation to South Finder. When can I? So these are just some, I think, straightforward recommendations. Um, unfortunately, I feel that the communications that have come out um, regarding transportation issues, I, they've been, um, not proactive, unresponsive, and, um, unfortunately even misleading or confusing in some respects. Um, thank you for considering these recommendations.
Thank you, Ms. Gina Bowler. Next up is Mr. William Small, Bowie High School, NJROTC Drill Competition Color Guard and Field Trips. Mr. Small. Sergeant Small. You're on mute.
Okay, again, thank you all. Uh, and I do apologize. But thank you all for, first of all, what you do. Uh, I, I know it's taxing and I know it's not easy. Uh, I am, uh, representing Bowie High School. I'm the senior Naval Science Instructor Acting. Uh, and I just want, uh, you all to, uh, take a look at Navy GROTC. Uh, we are, we are not allowed at this time to compete. Uh, at the school, first of all, train at the school for color guard and for drill competitions. And, uh, just as the football teams and the basketball teams are allowed to practice, uh, we do compete with other schools. And so I would like for you to just take a look at it and consider uh, that we are allowed to actually practice at the school. And second, actually go to the other schools to compete on weekends. Uh, right now, uh, we've been shut down and, uh, which is understood. Uh, but I would like for you to take a look at it. Uh, we do get a grade at the end of the year in regards to what we do, uh, how many, uh, drill meets that we participate. Uh, uh, and we do get a sort of a grade uh, from the Area Five Manager in Norfolk, Virginia. So right now, Prince George's County cannot compete. Uh, we have sixty-five other schools uh, with, in the region of Area Five, such as in Virginia and Washington DC, who are allowed to compete and we cannot compete. So I would like for you to just take a look at it and consider allowing Navy GROTC, uh, to compete. Number one, work, uh, in the afternoon to practice. Uh, and number two, uh, be provided transportation to actually go and compete with the rest of the schools. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sergeant Major Small. Next up is, uh, Tanya Wingfield. Ms. Wingfield? Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, good evening, um, board members, uh, Dr. Golson. I'm a little tired today, y'all, but, uh, my comments that I had, uh, were about the committees. And, um, my, my, my concern is, um, our tax dollars are paying quite a bit of money to a policy director. But I still see things still being done out of line with board policies. And, uh, don't understand why, because I think we are paying uh, this individual well enough so that there's some good guidance that should be given to the board. For example, um, you know, committee started new, fresh for the school year. And, um, it was great seeing the introduction for the Fiscal Affairs Budget Committee. I'm a little baffled how we didn't have an introduct- there's no introduction until October for the Policy and Governance Committee, but they're already uh, putting recommendations out before anything has, um, as far as, you know, their introduction and their charge and what they're going to do. So, um, I'm just really, I would like to see the board follow the policies. That's what we kept hearing. That's what the public kept hearing. We want you to go by the policy. We want you to follow the, uh, don't do things in violation of the board policy. So that is what I'm expecting this policy director to make sure happens. That members understand when they're doing things uh, that are not aligned with the board policies, you know? Everyone voted for those, the policies that were presented. But again, this Policy and Governance Committee, you haven't even done your introduction and you're already doing your progress report, which is not due until January. Um, also, I would, uh, like to, uh, see the board consider, you know, with the transportation issues that are going on. I know back when I was very active at the board, there were, it was a advisory committee, a parent advisory committee that worked with boundaries. And that's some of the things that we have looked at. And that may be, uh, very helpful to consider bringing back, um, the, uh, Advisory Committee of Parents for Boundaries. And that would encompass looking at transportation, looking at some of these things because it's not just a lack of bus drivers. We have to understand sometime programming affects transportation. If you have kids going from Bowie coming all the way to Glen Arden, that's a transportation issue. So we also need to look at some programming. And that was some of the things that as, uh, parent advisors that we were able to help bring insight to the board. So I would like for you to consider that. And then, uh, finally, um, the, uh, the strategic plan. Uh, I saw the plan that Dr. Golson uh, can I just finish this? She put together an excellent plan. That plan can help this board really guide what is happening or give the oversight that you want with the system. Learn that plan. Ask for another presentation from, uh, from our CEO so that you can learn that plan and use that plan to help measure how we are performing in the school system. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wingfield. Next up is Ms. Magaly Stalais.
She was not in the attendee queue.
Okay. Donna Christie. Dr. Donna Christie, PGCEA Instructional Equity.
Thank you. Good evening, esteemed members of the school board, Dr. Golson and the Prince George's County community. I am Dr. Donna Christie, President of the Prince George's County Educators Association. First, I would like to thank Dr. Golson and her team, including Howard Burnett and Jeffrey Carpenter, for engaging us in robust impact bargaining and recognition of the challenges presented by shifting twelve thousand K six students to virtual instruction resulting in a concurrent learning situation. Our regular meetings have also allowed us to collaborate and problem-solve the ongoing challenges presented by this pandemic. Your, uh, collaboration is very much appreciated. But as this pandemic continues to wreak havoc on our ability to provide consistent instruction and services to our students, we are concerned in particular about our quarantine students. The administration has clearly communicated with PGCEA that quarantine students are excluded from receiving virtual instruction. Our members would like to be able to continue providing their services to their quarantine students virtually, but to do so would be in opposition to the administration's guidelines. It is difficult for us to understand the reasoning for denying students the opportunity to engage in their instruction virtually when the practice is already in use in some schools and classrooms. This is an instructional inequity that we would like to come together to resolve. Now moving beyond the pandemic and looking at general educational practices within our system, we would also like to ask the board to revisit some of our other policies through a social justice and equity lens. For example, traditional grading policies have been found to produce inequities and skew educational outcomes. The crime and mon- and punishment model of school discipline disproportionately impacts marginalized socioeconomic group, groups. And the traditional school schedule does not accommodate time for intervention and remediation of students with low academic performance, special needs, learning English, or recovering from traumatic events. Our students need us to revisit all of our educational practices from an equi- equity and culturally responsive perspective and become a model of best practices. Thank you for your time and I look forward to joining you live in person in the near future.
Thank you, Dr. Christie. Next up is Rashid Lloyd, Individual School Reopening and Transportation. And before, uh, Ms., uh, Rashid Lloyd starts, I just wanted to remind everyone that we are having some technical iss- issues and our board staff may drop off and so we may have to pause. And Dr. Miller is also having, uh, technical issues, so I'm stepping in on her behalf. So Rashid Lloyd, Individual School Reopening and Transportation, you're up.
Thank you very much, Board Member Williams. I would like to offer one correction first. My name is pronounced Rashad. It's no fault of yours. None at all. So I will carry on and I will be quick and brief. I want to speak on the transportation issue. I have, from the outside, observed an issue and I have seven points that I would like to present to the board that need to be executed on so that we can start to resolve this issue quickly. So the first one is, we need to add Prince George's County Public School openings for the bus drivers to popular job search websites, LinkedIn, Monster, Craigslist, et cetera. I did a search for them yesterday and I cannot find them. I can tell you all from my private experience that if you want a process to be followed, it must be easy. And right now, the process is not easy. I also want the board to increase the temporary pay from thirteen twenty-five to fifteen dollars an hour and the permanent pay needs to be a living wage. You are asking people because you need them to come serve our children, then we need to make sure they can serve their families. We need to petition the Hogan Administration to direct the Maryland Department of Labor to send recruitment emails to the approximately one hundred and nine thousand individuals that we have on unemployment. We need to utilize Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram to spread the recruitment messaging. And for the elected members of the board, allow me to be cheeky for a moment. All of you know how political advertising works and I want to see the same thing on the recruitment for the drivers. Now, for our appointed members, you may not have the same experience, but please take these cues from the elected members and utilize these social media platforms for your benefits. I want you to create literature detailing the sense of urgency around filling these vacancies. Include all relevant job information so that people can see it at a glance. And we need to schedule community walks specifically to inform county residents of the shortage and ask that they spread the message to their family and friends. Over the last few weeks, I have seen plenty, plenty of elected officials going around knocking on doors, talking about their messaging. I want everyone focused on this issue. The speed of the team is the speed of the leader. And there are a lot of leaders in this county, so I expect to see a lot of results and quickly. And the last thing I want us to do is take all of that and go directly to businesses that traditionally underplay, pay their employees, retail, service, restaurant industry, hospitality. Boldly go to those people. We know they work. We will find them at work. And we need to make them offers to increase their quality of life. Their time, their service can be put to use for our school system. They can come and help serve our children. So this part is for the parents directly. I am a Prince George's County resident, so hear me out, parents. Oh, neighbors of mine. I am a Prince George's County resident, so hear me out, parents, oh neighbors of mine. Give me your consent to help execute these steps in your name for your children. Entreat you.
Thank you, Ms. Deloy.
End my comment.
Thank you. Next up is Ms. Lisa Burnham, Individual, Capital Budget.
She was not in the queue, but Ms. Salas, Magaly Salas.
Yes, here I am. Can you hear me? Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you. There were technical difficulties. Well, um, board members and Madam CEO, my name is Magali Salas, and I am the president of the Adelphi Hills Community Association. We deeply appreciate this opportunity to express our continued support for the decisions reflected in the proposed FY twenty-three CIP budget that address the overcrowding of schools in the northern region of the county. Our neighborhood is in the Adelphi Langley Park area, and for many years, we have witnessed how schools in this area at all levels have become vastly overcrowded. Today in particular, we want to state our support for the continued development of the project involving the construction of the new Northern Area High School. In addition, we want to convey our support for approval of the site-specific educational specification for this new high school. The construction of a new Adelphi Area High School was one of the key decisions approved by the board in twenty nineteen to remedy overcrowding at High Point, Northwestern, and Parkdale High Schools. The supporting documents and data showed that there had been a fifty percent increase in enrollment at feeder middle schools from twenty fourteen to twenty nineteen. Back then, there were thirty-three portable classrooms in operation at the three high schools I mentioned. With these, these facts staring at you, you decided that a new Adelphi Area High School was responsible in visionary planning. Indeed, this decision was a win for districts one, two, and three, the districts with the most overcrowded high schools. The overcrowding of schools at all levels has not stopped with the pandemic. Anecdotally, my own step-grandson, a new student at High Point, still cannot believe the number of students that this building houses daily. He's perplexed at the number of buses going in and out from all directions, he says, at the beginning and at the end of the day. It is critical that you remain committed to this project specifically designed to implement the overcrowding relief plan that you approved in twenty nineteen. As a member of the project planning committee for the new Adelphi Area High School, I can tell you that we look forward to the continued conversations to ensure that the school's design supports the CTE hub for the northern area, another remarkable win for districts one, two, and three. I also urge you to keep in mind that this project addresses overcrowding in areas that have the highest number of immigrant families, where many students struggle to meet challenges of academic attainment. This project will create an academic community that will support practical and invigorating educational opportunities for these students. Many thanks for your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Salas. Next up is J.C. Gutierrez, Lavi.
I don't see him in the queue. I keep typing, typing all of three of his names. Don't see, Richard Elliott is neither, is not in the queue either, but I am seeing that Lisa Burnham.
Lisa Burnham is, okay?
Yes. Yes, I just pulled her over.
Thank you. Next up is Lisa Burnham, Individual, Capital Budget.
Thank you. You can hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. Good evening. My name's Lisa Burnham, and I'm a mother of an Accra Kick Academy student who goes in person. Her school has a huge student body of roughly fifteen hundred students, plus teachers and other staff. Perhaps there are fewer with the limited virtual learning that's available. This week sadly though, we were notified of the first COVID nineteen case at the school. Our community has been shuttered for nearly two years, leaving the board with ample time and resources to figure out the safest return for our children, teachers, and personnel. During this time, however, parents and members of the community have had to watch billion-dollar deals get made with private developers. We're seeing budgets for projects like Margaret Brett balloon by four million dollars, Cool Spring balloon by four point seven million dollars, High Point by five million dollars, Sutland High by thirty million dollars, New Northern High by fifty-three point three million dollars. This is the height of fiscal mismanagement. We're being overcharged by hundreds of millions of dollars. So much of this money could have been allocated to invest in modernizations, renovations, and COVID nineteen safety, like creating outdoor learning spaces, installing air purifiers for the long term. For the long term, uh, building greater numbers of smaller but well-planned schools was seriously our infrastructure, especially in high-density districts. Uh, in the morning, my husband sits for nearly an hour to drop off our daughter. It takes me an hour in the afternoon to pick her up. We could have had enough funds to compensate bus drivers with stable, family-supporting wages and hire more of them to meet the demand. Funds could have been used to invest in PPE for buses, so these workers could feel safe to go to work. County law recommends that we have PPLAs or project labor agreements for at least two projects a year. We've never done it, and the county executive will not commit to using them. Why is that? Using tools like project labor agreements would have ensured that we stayed on budget, union jobs were created, and our tax dollars weren't wasted. And our students, most importantly, would have, uh, with their existing schools, could be better resourced and able to respond to the needs of the moment. Instead though, blank checks have been written to developers. Our children deserve so much better. Stop putting your personal ambitions before the needs of our future leaders. And I second the call for transportation stipends by Ms. Cavelli, calling for, on the National Guard to support the lack of drivers by Councilmember Urbina. We really have to do better. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Burnham. That appears to be the end of the list, and I will now return the chair back to our board chair, Dr. Juanita Miller.
Thank you, Vice Chair Williams. I appreciate your intervention. Next, um, the, this concludes the public comment. The testimony of commoners who registered and provided written or electronic testimony have been posted on board docs for review by board members and the public. Next, we will go to the, well, we had started with the consent agenda. I'm not sure we voted. Because the, there was an interruption in the, let's just go back through it.
Madam Chair, we did do all of four point, uh, four point one to four point seven. Yes, we did.
Okay, so then we can move to five point zero, uh, the budget consent agenda. Thank you.
Excuse me, point of order? If I could, because I did lose connection as well, can I have the person that made the motion in the second for the consent agenda vote?
Who made the motion for that?
I think it was me, me, I think.
Who's second? Uh, Board Member Queen, are you raising your hand? Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, then we will move now to five point oh. Uh, Dr. Golson, please introduce items five point one and five point six. And, uh, earlier, um, Board Member Ahmed asked me to ask for separate voting on two of the items.
Yes, ma'am, five point five and five point six. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Golson.
Items five point one through five point four requires board approval of the September two thousand twenty-one expenditure requirements. A resolution for continuation of the foundation school partnership. Contract awards for requested proposals for dental and vision preferred providers organization administration. The FY two thousand twenty-two approved operating budget full-time equivalent amendment.
Since we're going to vote separately, I'd like to have vote on five point one through five point four. May I have a motion?
So moved.
It's been moved in second that we approve, uh, items five point one through five point four. Any discussion? If there's no discussion, I'd like to call the roll. And the student, uh, is not allowed to vote on the budget consent agenda. Therefore, um, is there any discussion? No discussion. Hearing that, we will move to, uh, vote. All in favor? Aye? Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion carries. Items five point one through five point four have been approved. Next, we will have five point five and five point six. Dr. Golson.
Item five point five, approval of education specifications for the new area Adelphi High School and a recommendation five point six to purchase a new digital laser projector for the Board of Education.
Okay, we'll take a motion for five point five to approve the, uh, site-specific educational specification for the new Northern Adelphi Area High School.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve, uh, for approval of the site-specific educational specification for Northern Adelphi Area High School. Any discussion? I see two hands. Uh, Board Member Ahmed.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Colleagues, uh, I'm very supportive of fixing our infrastructure and alleviating overcrowding in the north, but I've heard some community concerns about this project that I wanted to ask administration about. Uh, my first question is around soil. Uh, could, could y'all tell me what is the soil suitability of the site?
So, um, we are, we are in the process of doing borings right now. But, uh, uh, there was one, uh, section that we were thinking about building a school on, and we determined that it wasn't suitable soil for, uh, constructing a structure. So what we're, the plan is currently is to build the school, um, where the current, um, Cherokee Lane Elementary School is. So once, uh, that building is demolished, uh, we'll build on that site. And, uh, we don't have a soil issue in that particular area.
Okay, and, and has the cost of the school, of the high school gone up because of their, the efforts and the remediation that may be required?
No, um, we were going to build, we were going to have to demolish the elementary school regardless of, uh, uh, we were going to eliminate that structure. So it, it hasn't caused the price to go up. We just reoriented the building slightly in order to take care of that.
All right, and then, uh, my next question is around traffic. I know that's a really highly traffic area. Um, was there a traffic flow study done, and what did that show?
Uh, there is a draft, um, study that was done. Uh, and I don't, uh, it hasn't been finalized yet uh, for that particular area, and it covers the entire area. Part of the reason was they wanted to do a little bit more. Uh, I'm not sure why it hasn't been finalized actually this afternoon. And the other item that we have is that we're, we're also trying to, we were determining whether or not we could bring, whether or not we were going to have the right-of-way across University of Maryland property, which it looks like we will now. So I think that was going to contribute to the final version of, of, of the traffic study. So the plan currently right now is to build a access driveway over the, uh, University of Maryland property and up all the way past, uh, the, uh, current Cherokee Lane site, all the way up to the Buck Lodge site to provide, um, transportation not through the neighborhood, uh, for all three schools that are served, that will be served by the access driver.
Uh, Board Member Ahmed, excuse me for a minute. I kept hearing a message that, uh, the recording had stopped, and Ms. Berkeley, what's going on? I can't hear you. But while Mr. Bedlock was talking, uh, twice, a, a message came through saying that the recording had stopped. So we need to make sure everything has been captured.
She did turn the recording back on, but I don't know where she went.
She's here. I can't hear her.
And see her back in here.
We, we can't hear, um, Ms. Berkeley, but you can actually see at the top left that it is recording. So we, we can confirm that it is recording.
Do you want me to restate the statement that I made?
Yes, because it did stop.
Fair enough. So, uh, so the traffic study has not been finalized. I believe that's because you're waiting for, to find out about the right-of-ways, um, across University of Maryland property and the, um, uh, and soon order to build an access road. But, um, we are going to get permission, appears, from the University of Maryland to, uh, create an access off of Metrot Road and create a driveway, uh, that will connect all three schools, that'd be the new high school and, uh, the middle school and the elementary school at the Buck Lodge site. Uh, and that'll take all the traffic, uh, at least bus traffic and, uh, student and, um, and teacher traffic, uh, off of the neighborhood roads and put it on that access road.
That question, um, uh, so I would just ask as a follow-up item, once the traffic study is available, that that be provided to us as a board? And also any soil suitability studies that are available for that area? Uh, my last question is, was there a feasibility study done on this project?
Uh, yeah, there was. Um, it's, it's attached here too, I believe. Uh, to the, oh, I'm sorry, no, it's not attached to this, but there, there, there was a feasibility study done. It was done, uh, performed by Gilbert Arbuckle Tech, and I think that the, um, the, the traffic study is part of that. And I think that's, it's all waiting to be completed. They performed it, but I don't think it's complete because they have the traffic study.
Awesome, thank you. I'd ask that the feasibility, feasibility study, um, also be, uh, sent to the board as a follow-up. Thank you so much.
Are those all your comments? Um, Ms. Ahmed? Okay, thank you very much. I was the second one in the queue. I think maybe our chair has frozen.
I, I called you. I was on mute. I apologize.
That's okay. Uh, I just have a couple of comments and a few questions. My comments are, uh, are around the specific educational specification for the Northern Area High School. I think that this is a very inclusive report, uh, with all of the information, especially it's giving us the details around how this building will become the hub for the Nor, Northern Area CTE, which is a, which is great to know, to have this document in writing at the beginning of the process. It helps us to follow through and do our job as board members to oversee, to ensure that you're meeting the targets that you set out from the very beginning. So the laying out of this process is, I have to commend you on this very, very thoroughly written, uh, document. Um, also, it, it states how many students we're going to be serving and, um, how we came up with the number of classrooms and things like that in there. Additionally, I saw how the building would be laid out in the different areas, which shows that with this new educational specification, we're getting ready for the next version of learning in the school building. So I can appreciate all of this detail being provided to us. And it helps us to see movement in the direction that we're trying to get with our plans for the next educational facility. So I appreciate that, because I've never seen it to this detail before the ACF became on, a, a part of how we do business. So doing it in the traditional sense, it's going to be very helpful for us to follow and track the progress. So as we move forward with this, um, educational facilities, uh, specification and meeting our targets to help with, resolve some of the Northern Area overcrowding, the only thing that I saw that was missing was a site plan, meaning not a site plan in the traditional sense with all the details, but just if we could include a map to sort of locate it, so we in, in other parts of the county can envision where it is. And, and so we can figure out how to drive by and see progress and things like that. So I think is, this was a, uh, that is my only ask for this to be added to the report. And if we can include a site location map, you know, on future communications with the board, just so that we can be reminded. Um, the other part that I wanted to, to discuss was watching, we've been talking about this Northern Area High School for years. And seeing a step to the point where we are actually doing studies and getting ready to actually implement the construction plan, I think it shows that the process takes time. If we want a boiled egg, it's going to take some time, and to see us stick to this plan and get there is amazing. Um, can you discuss the, the challenges that are included in the, that can be covered under the budget? Um, for example, Board Member Ahmed spoke about the soils, challenges that we're uncovering. Is there, when is the opportunity for staff? Is there, when is the opportunity for staff to understand the soil capabilities um on-site? And if there are challenges, how would we, what is the traditional way that we would handle something like that?
So at the moment, what we're doing is, well, since I've been here, uh I've gotten to observe a lot of projects now. And what I've determined, which I don't think a lot of people have had the opportunity to sit in the seat quite as long, is that um there is, that is our main problem that we have with getting permits passed and getting projects moved forward, and it's also one of the cost drivers that we're seeing throughout uh the projects that we're doing. So one of the things that we're trying to do is take more borings um to get more information about what we're actually building, so we can build certain aspects into the budget. Um as you, as we've talked about in some locations, uh we determined that it was unsuitable to build a building on a particular site because of the amount of pierings that we would have peers that we'd have to put in in order to um support the building because due to compaction issues and other things like that. In other places, we've had to remove all of the unsuitable soil from the property. Um Cherokee Lane is one of them, uh and then bring in all new soil that was more compactable. Um actually, we've been looking at bus lot opportunities, and we've been rejecting them because we found that we've got a lot of sandy soil that also is not suitable for compaction, thus making it a difficult site to build on or even put a parking, um parking lot on. So we're running into soil issues on lots of sites, and when you have those soil issues, it can affect your foundation and.
So when you, when you come across these, these situations, what is the earliest timeframe in which you can, you would even initiate that process?
Uh right around the feasibility study period, when we're, when we're starting to do the borings. And we're trying, uh one of the things that the charges that we've given to our architects in the design phase is, and then the feasibility phases is pay more attention to the site plan. Um but they immediately want to jump to the building. I'm very excited to get to the building because they're architects. But one of the things that we're trying to do now is focus on our sites so that we have a better plan and we can get through Soil Conservation District in a more expeditious manner.
In scheduling a budget and, and coming up with the conceptual budget, and what, when in that timeframe are you able to understand the site? Is it as soon as you have the idea that you need a, a new building? Or is it after we've already, I have gone through some of the design process? When in the timeline of the, the budgetary life of the project are you able to do that?
It, it should be, it hasn't been as early as we'd like. Let me be honest about that. Uh what, in, in, in the past, we, we've sort of, like I said, the designers have jumped to the building first and thought about the site second in a lot of cases. Um it should be happening earlier in site selection. Um one of the things that we're trying to do, um that we were lucky to do on the ACF, um we did that was that we got out and did the borings on all those sites very, very early to determine if we had any problems. And then we disclosed those problems or issues earlier on, and we gave the, the potential developers the opportunity to come out and do their own borings so they could confirm our findings, and it's been very helpful. Uh in the case of the new high school, in fact, I screamed and jumped up and down on the desk, get the borings done. They finally went out and did the borings and realized where they were thinking about putting the high school, they can't put it. So then we decided to reorient the building, and which has changed, and it's gonna change the design quite a bit. But um it, then we're now putting it in a place where we know we have good soil, and we've now tested and know that there, one part of the property is not as stable as the other, and we'll put something that's less challenging on that spot. So it, it requires, you know, we have to do it early enough, usually early in the design period. And if, if it turns out to be a very difficult, so a very difficult site, but a mediation plan is being put in place that will impact the budget. In some cases, a mediation plan is capable, in some places it's not.
So I just, I'm just trying to understand that when we, uh when we start the process of going to the state and asking for money and coming up with the, the initial budget of the project, these, these items aren't known, and it's not until we move further along in the project that we find that there may be unforeseen conditions that we have to then put into the budget. So.
That is true.
And so, okay, so thank you very much. That's all my questions. Dr. Miller, you're on mute.
Board Member Burrows. Wait, we moved to saying, back to uh Board Member Ahmed.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um I just had a follow-up question um to what you had said previously, Mr. Matlock. You had said that we're trying to build the high school on the elementary school land, and I see in the document um that you presented to us that it's about twenty-two acres on almost four hundred thousand square foot of um of the building plus an athletic field. So i- isn't that too small for the size and the scale of the school that we're trying to build?
Well, um no, uh well, there's some more work that we've been doing. So we've acquired about ten acres of land from the uh State Highway Administration in a swap. And so the site will actually be larger than the twenty-two acres that we're talking about, right, we're talking about. And then we're also gonna, we're trying to negotiate with um Maryland um Parks and Planning um because they have fields that are right behind where the place is now. And we'd like to see, we're trying to work on a joint development where we can develop some of the athletic fields in that part of the land as well. It, it, we're change, like I said, it did change the design a little bit, but we do have sufficient space to put all the aspects of the building on there. It will be a tall high school, so it will not be a two-level high school. We're like, we're a level high school, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay, all right, thank you for that. I know that it's, it's hard. Um there's, there's a lot of congestion, and so it's difficult to, to find spaces. But I just wanted to make sure that you're, y'all are thinking of what to do. Um I am concerned that the ten acres that you were bringing to a swamp land, so I don't know how much that's gonna be usable and environmentally, um what we, what we want when it comes to building. Um, uh so those are concerns that are percolating in the back of my head. I just, but the issue is, I don't know that we, I, I can't think of a solution to that other than finding a different site um that maybe we don't own, but that, you know, is a whole endeavor in itself. So I'm just sharing with you, these are my thoughts as what, what you said, but thank you so much for sharing that information.
Board Member Burrows.
Yes, my question is also for Mr. uh Matlock. I remember uh two years ago when we voted to advance the New Northern Area High School, we also voted to advance High Point High School as well. Uh what, what is the status of High Point? So High Point, um you're on the head of vote, and we submitted a budget to the county. Um and the county council did not fund um uh High Point at the same time that they funded New Northern. Uh in a subsequent budget, they did fund the design for High Point High School. So High Point High School is basically about, as far as design is concerned, about, it's getting ready to kick off. Uh we've, we had hired um the, or we had selected the architect about a year ago. And when we did not get the funding, they sat sort of dormant, waiting for us to get the funding. So the budget year for their funding just started, and so we're engaging them now, and they're working on um uh right now on, on design. Thank you.
Vice Chair Williams.
Thank you. Um so when, when you undertake a project and there are challenges, how do you all resolve those challenges? My dog would like to have the an- the answer to that as well. What there, who is on the team that would handle soil, building, traffic challenges? Is that in-house or is it someone, someone?
It's a, it's joint, basically. So we have a design team. Um we have a couple of ar- architects that serve on our design team. We have a bunch of CAD dryers and mechanical engineers. Uh we have people within building services that helps us out. Uh we have planners that are involved in this um on our planning team. But we also work with uh outside engineers, architects, surveyors, um um all types of people that we bring in, and then we form sort of like a team around each project, and that team is then uh works to try and resolve these issues as best we can. Uh it, it, it's, it's a very large undertaking in most cases, um but usually uh we're catching, um we have regular meetings to, to, to address the issues and review when we're having issues. Um uh the project meetings are usually weekly uh for each project, and uh they get together and sort of walk through the problems and try to come up with solutions.
And so the goal is to solve the problem, to work with the, the information that you have, the, the location that you have, and within the specifications that you have. What would it take to, for you, well, let me ask first a, a question about, um you mentioned about there would be a number of peers if there was a soil issue, meaning you will put uh pillars in the ground to help support a foundation to hold the building stable, and that is very costly. Ideally, we would just want to put a foundation on the ground and, and then, but sometimes we have to do other means. And so i- it, can you quickly talk about what are those, those other means? Because what I understand is that the building may be the same. It is the soil, the site, the access to the road. Those are the differences that we have to look at it, at every site, which could cause us to have a different cost at every building. So can you talk to me about those differences when we're, when we come across we're gonna place the same building on a different site, and we have those challenges? What are some of the things, tools that we could use in order to build a building if we have a challenge?
I'll, I'll be honest with you. We have built buildings on some of the most crazy sites I've ever seen in my life, to be honest with you. I mean, we're, we're talking about um streams running under buildings that were built years ago, but they're, they're aqueducts underneath them. Um there are all kinds of things, and they're having impacts on, on the foundations and things now. So it's very important that we really take a good look at our sites. Um one of the things that we try to do is we try to, to not build on bad sites. That's the first thing. The second thing is, if the site has a challenge that's overcomeable for a reasonable price, then, then you look at the site and you start thinking about how you might want to mitigate the issue. If you're gonna have to put peers in, and a lot of them, that's not a good idea. If you're going to have to put, um if you're gonna have to check, to take out soil and put in soil, it's, it's doable. It's not, it's not quite as expensive. It's doable. There's some other things you can do, different types of foundation methodologies, but if you get a place and you really don't get the compaction done right, and the, the, the um excavators don't get it right, you're gonna have foundation problems for the life of the building. And um and, and, and so that's what we're trying to avoid, uh because an unstable building eventually is gonna have to be replaced.
Thank you very much.
Uh Board Member Queen.
Thank you so very much for recognizing me, Madam Chairwoman. One of the questions um I had as a board member, it seemed like when it's issues with a lot of these projects, as a board, some of the issues don't come to us. Um we're not informed, and I'm just wondering why um as a board, um even as far as the budget until money is needed, and then it comes back to us and saying all of these things are done. Is there a certain process or should not we know ahead of time when there's issues going on with projects? And that's my first question. And my next question is, is when, 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 when I go out, as I run my house, so I think about it, when I go out, whether I'm gonna buy a house or buy a car, I know, actually know how much I'm gonna spend. I know what I'm looking for. I did my research. So I'm just wondering um how good, and no offense to anybody, our architects, our builders and everybody is that we keep going over price, and maybe we should be looking at, if this is constantly happening, that maybe we got the wrong people in the wrong positions.
Well, let me answer your first question first. Um as far as the problems are concerned, this is construction. We have hundreds of projects going all the time. If I brought every problem and laid it at your feet, you would go crazy. I'm almost insane myself. And so the, i- it, it's just too much stuff to bring. They're just, every project has a problem. Every project has some issue. They're not always solved with cash. Some of them are timing. Some of them were with issues with Pepco. Some of them are issues with uh, you know, water that we found. Uh it's just, it would be impossible to update you on uh in, in an operational way of every problem. And that, and there's very little that you could do for us on those things, because most of these problems, as I said, are not always solved with money or, you know, that usually it's just planning and thinking, and thinking to the problem and being a thought partner with our, our contractors and, and architects and our engineers. Um it takes a lot of work. Um just putting in a new trailer now required us to really be rethinking where our piping is going, whether or not we have to put up a hydrant in, where the meter might go, if the meters can violate the SSC policy. There's a lot that goes into everything now that, that before we didn't really have to think about all, all the time. To answer your second question, uh as far as project overrun is concerned, what we, what, what, where most people are seeing the rise in budgets are in the projected budget, not the actual budget. So we don't actually have a, a lot of cost overruns after the project has been bid and the work has been started. What we're, what we see is an escalation in the estimate, and those escalations in estimate are what a lot of people are pointing to as cost overrun. There's been no money spent on the project. We haven't done anything. We're still in design, and a lot of the costs are based on, well, the building needs to be a little bit, look larger here. The building needs a little bit smaller there. We need to be higher here. We need to make, do more foundation work there. They're working on these projects and, and there's changes. There's also escalation in costs that are related to the economy. Um they, the, the instruction economy itself, and uh we're also seeing, um you know, there's a, there's just a regular escalation in material costs that go up. So when, when we finally get a project bid or a project that's bid by us, um we'd never, we don't really have a lot of problems with maintaining our budgets. It's very rare that we have major cross overrun after bidding. It's usually before bidding, uh before, when we're trying to figure out what the budget should be, so that then the people get to bid to that budget, and then we usually get our pricing. And then usually it's pretty good at managing the budget. We've been fair, I, I, I've seen, at least with our team, fairly good job of managing the budget.
Excuse me, Mr. Malo, only because Board Member Queen has limited time for each question.
And on and on. I'm gonna have to chop you off.
And I just wanted to quickly say, we do have a change order report that's on the website on Board Member Queen, and we can make sure we provide you the link to and access so that you can also check it regularly to see what we're referencing. Thank you.
Very much, and I just want to make a statement in the end that if the, um, if we did tell them to do the boring, then we shouldn't be paying extra money to the architect, so we really need to look in that if we're doing what we need to do upfront. But I just wanted to make that statement, so thank you so very much. That's it, Madam Chair.
Board Member Murray. David Murray.
Thank you, Dr. Miller. Good evening, Mr. Matlock. Um my first question is, how would you describe the community engagement um process with regards to the, the planning of this high school and the site location thus far?
Um, it's not as, been as good as I'd like. That's the question. I mean, we, we tried to do some community engagement. Uh we've done some, some discussions with the community. Um and uh mostly it's been limited to the school community, uh and, but we don't know a lot about the project yet. We're starting to plan it. We've actually are trying to engage some help so that we do a better outreach generally. Um it, it's, it's one of our weak points in my department. It's something we're trying to fix.
Okay, that, that's good to know. As you know, it's a project of pretty, pretty big size, and it's gonna impact a lot, a lot of people in that area. Um my second question is, is the area that the school is being built on a wetland?
No, um there was a comment, a public comment uh at the last board uh public hearing that it was built in a floodplain, and I, and I, I was concerned when I heard that, and I did check with my, our engineers, and it is not in a floodplain. It's not in a wetland.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. And my last question is, um I believe we have some pending boundary changes, so I'm wondering how this project could be potentially impacted um with respect to potential boundary changes?
Oh, it's not gonna stop the construction of the site and the number of seats in the site. We work around what the IAC approves for the number of seats, and we begin to function from that standpoint.
Thank you, Dr. Golson. I, I understand that we're, we're building for the number of seats. I guess I'm just asking, kind of, one of the biggest rationales for the project is in relation to the need for seats, and so I'm just wondering if there are any potential, if there's any potential to alleviate the need for as many seats um through this boundary change process?
Now, actually, just because of the numbers that you could see it in our boundary proposal that people reviewed, the number of seats that we need in the Northern Area is so great, it won't be able to alleviate that. We can't do less. And that's based on projections for the next ten to fifteen years.
Right, okay. Thank you both.
Thank you. Mr. Ma- Matlock, I'd just like to um ask you to expound on, you mentioned permitting, and I am aware from previous um roles in the county that a lot of contractors have difficulty uh with that permitting process taking so long. And uh it would be, uh if you can uh apprise the board, that that can some, have some impact as well as the uh timing of your construction projects.
Yeah, so um there are multiple groups that we go to, so it's WSSC, there's uh Maryland National Capital Parks and Planning, there is uh Soil Conservation District and DPI, um plus we have to deal with the various um energy, um the various energy agents trying to do that, and a lot of, and, and because we don't pay for um review by DPI, all of our reviews have been third-party. So to give you an example why that can be a little bit frustrating is, if we do an electrical inspection, we have to have our third-party come out and do the electrical inspection first. They approve it, then we have DPI come out and do the same electrical inspection that the third-party group did, then they approve it, and then only, and only. Then they approve it. And then only and only then can the work proceed to the next stage of work. So what happens is we we have lots of, we not only do we have one level of review. We often have multiple levels of review because of the nature by which we get our reviews done. And uh, all the different permitting. So almost every, at every stage of permit, there is a um, a a permit that's issued and then a reconstruction meeting. And there are multiple ones. And sometimes even uh, if if we were building like in the city of Bowie. Um, you have to deal with the with the local, their local um permitting agency because they they have taken some of the permitting part on their own and they have to have their own set of of reviews, permits and uh reviews. And it can be, it can delay a project. Um, not only months but years.
Thank you. And does that sometimes affect the pricing?
Yeah, delay and uh cost and sometimes changes. So we'll have to go back to the architects and the engineers to change the pro- the projects. We'll have to make adjustments. Every time there's a review, there's an opportunity to provide comment. And that comment then goes back to the architects. The architects then have to either comment, respond to the comment, or make changes to the plan in response to the comment. Um, and like I said, there are numerous reviews. I didn't even include the fire marshal. And so there's, there's just numerous and numerous reviews that happen. And it takes a long time to make sure you get it. And then with us, we also have oversight from MSDE and DGS at the IAC. They also review all of our drawings and you have an opportunity to comment at their levels. And we can't move forward without their permission as well.
Thank you. Uh, Board Member Burrows.
Mr. Matlock, I want to ask a question based off of the questions from the chair to make sure I understand correctly. Um, did I understand you correctly and her question correctly that obtaining permits uh increases the cost or the delay in permits? If you can just explain that, articulate that.
Sure. Um, so let's uh, sometimes when you have a a project, um, if you have a lot of changes that are being made uh for various reasons. Uh, for instance, uh, New Glen Ridge Middle School is one of the the problems that we had. Uh, we went back to Soil Conservation District a number of times. They made us go back out and do more borings uh in order to confirm our numbers. Um, we had to spend more money on 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 the engineering and the site people to come out and do more work on the uh uh to verify the plan that we had. And so it took a long time. Uh, that project was delayed significantly because we were dealing with all the the um, trying to satisfy Soil Conservation District on a plan that eventually they did approve. Um, but it it took quite a bit of time to do it. It's it was, it wasn't so much that they that that they um, that they wouldn't, didn't accept the plan. It was more or less they wanted more and more validation because of issues that they'd seen in some on some other projects. And wanted to make sure that ours was as safe as we said it was. So it 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 sometimes it just requires you to go back, do more borings, do more work, do additional surveys. Um, you know, it 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 it's not merely just filling out a form with a plan and sending it. It's a collaboration. It's a give and take between the permitters and our architects and our engineers to get things done. And and so it can cost more money paying the architects and engineers and it can take more more time. And thus it delays construction and then costs can go up as a result of that.
And also, I think you mentioned a deep pie as well. We have those same issues in deep pie. And if so, to what extent? You're muted.
Yes, with deep pie, we have those those issues. I mean, uh, another example was, you know, there they a lot of times they're they get to a point where they're just signing off on documentation. It's already been reviewed by a third party reviewer. But because it goes through so many different offices and they don't necessarily talk to each other. A document can sit on a desk to somebody for a week or a month, even though it's been approved. It's just sitting there and that causes delay. Um, that that's not what happens all the time, but we have those issues. But everybody has those issues from now on.
I I guess my question is, if it's what can we do across agencies or uh the folks that issue permits to communicate if they're not currently communicating?
Well, I I'll tell you what they did with the ACF has been very effective. They have a weekly meeting uh with all the all the permit issuers. Um, then they get together and and they they resolve things. Another thing could be a dedicated point of contact, the deep hide and handle all of our work that we can go to on a regular basis, maybe two or three, even if we paid for. It would even be cost effective in some ways that we paid for them to have staff that did our work for us there because because of the cost. I'm sorry. I I know that's out of turn. I'm sorry.
No, you're fine. I just wanted to interject and just state that recently we have had an opportunity, but at my level to talk with staff about deep pie and then to also have it at the level below me so that we can be expeditious in, so deep pie can be expeditious in responding to our requests. We will continue that dialogue.
Thank you, Dr. Golson.
Mister.
Board Member Mar, I mean, Burrows, I think your time is up. This is your second round.
Well, I haven't, I didn't hear the buzzer or in the the board staffer did not say that my time was up, so.
He's having challenges with her um computer. She was off and now she's back. Um.
I'm sorry, I'm I'm back.
Okay, well. I'll I'll submit it as an email. Thank you all so much. Appreciate it.
Board Member Queen.
Thank you so very much, Madam Chairwoman. Um, I just have a question. Um. Similar to what Board Member um, Burrows just stated. I know I mentioned it earlier, you guys, and exactly session as we're looking for a date, that September twenty ninth, the planning board is having their budget meeting. Um, would it not be a time for somebody from staff, Dr. Golson, to go to this planning board budget meeting? And maybe even a a board members to ask them to put in their budget to have someone that can actually be budget towards helping us get our plans um put through. I think we have not because we asked not the same way people come to our budget meeting and request and ask things. Do we not go through the planning board and to their budget meeting and put these requests in?
We actually can include it in our requests. We take up sixty percent of the county um budget. We can also include it in our even though that person would be designated solely um for deep pie. And then they could take it out of ours.
I mean, I like that idea too, but I still like the fact that we go in front of them and at their budget meeting and also request it also. So I think we may need to think of having staff. I mean, if it's something that we're requesting and everyone needs to know about to even be transparent to even let the county and all of our stakeholders know what is needed. What better place to do it than to do it at their count, their regular budget meeting? So I just wanted to suggest that also. So thank you so very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. With that, that ends the discussion uh on item five point five. Now I'd like to have a motion to uh to approve um five point five.
Move that we approve five point five.
I second it.
Second to approve the site specific educational specification for New Northern Adelphi Area High School.
Madam Chairwoman, do have we not, were we not in discussion? Did we not already move and seconded that item prior to discussion?
Okay.
We're just calling for the vote now.
Well, no one called for the vote. That's why I asked that. Thank you. All in favor? All opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, uh, call the roll, please, Ms. Berkeley.
Yes, ma'am. Mrs. Adam Stafford?
Aye.
Mrs. Ahmed?
Abstain.
Ms. Boozers Strather?
Aye.
Mr. Burrows?
Abstain.
Mr. Harris?
Abstain.
Mrs. Mickens Murray?
Aye.
Mr. Montero?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Staying.
Mrs. Queen?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas? Sorry, Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Mr. Valentine?
Aye.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Dr. Miller?
Yes.
Have nine eyes? Four abstentions.
Motion carries to approve the site specific educational specification for the New Northern Adelphi Area High School. We will move to uh five point six. The recommendation to purchase a new digital laser projector for the Board of Education Auditorium. Is there any discussion?
I move that we accept the recommendation for the purchase of the new digital projector.
A second.
It has been moved in second that we um approve the recommendation to purchase a new digital laser projector for the Board of Education Auditorium. Now we'll go into discussion. I saw Board Member Ahmed's hand first.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I had one question for administration and that is, um, have you all looked into uh the alternative options that were mentioned by some of the board members in the past regarding this specifically? Can we receive a good functioning projector from another public agency or local business?
That's the data, Mr. Zuckerman, I thought was on the call, but I can.
Yeah, I'm here.
He's here.
Yeah.
Please share what we found.
Yeah, thank you. Um, and I know we have a a written follow up coming to you as well, uh, Ms. Ahmed. So our staff did explore that possibility and we didn't find a a very suitable aftermarket for this type of equipment that we deal to reliable projector. Of particular concern to our audio visual and technology team was the fact that the refurbished or or gently used projectors would not necessarily come with a service installation plan and ongoing maintenance plan. And in fact, potential vendors have stated that they wouldn't install it because they can't certify the functionality of it in the long run and they're not gonna support it with an ongoing maintenance plan. And so of concern to us was the the impact on warranty agreements that that we would get with a new projector. And so the short term savings that we might generate um by going this route could potentially be offset if the projector fails pretty quickly and then we don't have a warranty or or maintenance plan to go with that. And so for that reason, our staff uh recommends purchasing a new projector, which would then position the auditorium for future upgrades as well and be very ready to to handle additional upgrades.
No, thank you so much for that, that explanation. I think that all makes sense. Uh, it's just hard for me to wrap my brain around. I'm spending so much on a projector and I still uh it it just, it it's hard for me to accept um that cost, but I appreciate that y'all looked into it and have provided this uh in-depth response. Thank you.
Yep.
Board Member Thomas.
Yeah, thank you. Um, I just wanted to voice um just kind of vote to to the public why I won't be supporting this. Um, I just don't can't really rationalize um spending so much on a projector for um, this also from my time on the board. Um, have only seen be utilized in quite limited capacities. I I understand that it does have some, it does serve some purpose, but I do think we can probably find better ways around it. I think I'm especially um, you know, just a little bit turned up by the idea of spending so much on on that kind of an object when uh, we're we're expecting for teachers and people in the classroom to come out of pocket for expenses for actual instruction. So I understand that's comparing apples to oranges. I do, I get it. But um, I just won't be voting in favor of this for that reason. Thank you.
Board Member Queen.
Thank you so very much. Unlike my colleagues who went before me, I am for the projector. You guys, we gotta think outside the box. Things have changed. COVID has put us in so many places. I remember when I first got on the board, I kept pushing for online learning. Um, and that was one of the first things I mentioned to Dr. Golson. And 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 it wasn't because of COVID. It was because it was students who had to help their parents by staying home and watching siblings, or they couldn't go to school when a sibling was sick, or they needed to get out here and work. It was for other reasons. But because of COVID, it was able to get done, but not for the reason that I really was requesting that at first. And so in saying that, you guys, things have changed. We have to come up into the twenty first century. We need a projector that is gonna be able to handle if if, for instance, we have to go back out again, that we have to be on Zoom and we have to be there. It's no, I mean, I would mean, I would have liked to know and the question I was gonna ask is, um, would it have been cheaper to lease um to own one? Um, you know, just like you do a car. But we gotta be very careful when we talk about buying something used. You know what happened when you buy a used car? You get what you pick. I don't wanna talk about Ford. It can be fixed over a period earlier, found on a road net. You get what you get. So we have to be very careful in what we do. And make sure that we're getting something that's gonna be productive. I'm gonna be honest with you. I was trying not to cuss y'all, but I was like I would like to spend that money on metal detectors for my high school for real, but sometime other things would have to be done. So unfortunately, we need a projector, so we're gonna have to get a projector. And I'm gonna still be pushing for metal detectors for my high school for the same cost. So thank you.
Board Member uh Valentine.
Th- thank you. Um, and I I I um, I'm hearing the comments from my colleague. I just wanna put, you know, this expense in context as those who are watching uh could simply find different ways to spend that money. Um, but I wanted to bring Dr. Golson in. Particularly in a discussion on why that we had this in the first place, you know, discussion of us moving um back actually into in person as a board in October and our ability to function in person, but also give the community access to us um through utilizing uh this uh projector. So Dr. Golson, can you talk a little bit about why we're making this purchase? And actually, utilization of this is something that we make, that we purchase on an annual basis every five years. How much utilization we get out of this uh, this purchase and not just for board meetings, but also for professional development, for all the meetings that happen in that space outside of the bi-monthly and uh periodic committee meetings. But just kind of talk about the discussion about why we're doing this, because those who are watching could uh get a misconception um about it uh based on what they've heard.
Yeah, thank you. Um, Board Member Valentine. So we add into this discussion around the board auditorium as we begin to make preparations for the return, which will take place in October for in-person meetings. It's important to note that the projector that currently is there is over ten years old. And because it is so old, that when that bulb goes out, we won't be able to replace it. And we do use um that screen for every meeting. If you recall, it's just been so long since we've been there. But our communications team with Jake, with Dave Zarin, did videos at the beginning of every meeting and we utilize our equipment for that. Um, if you recall last year or the year before last, when we were in meetings, we literally had times where our equipment was failing in order to allow the community members to watch our meetings live. And we had to find money to replace that. This is no different. Um, the boardroom had not been updated in many years. This is only one of many. We still need additional funds for a good soundboard, but that is not in this request right now. This is the most immediate. And so, for example, um, last board meeting, I did a presentation um for my entire team. Had we done that in the boardroom and that bulb had gone out, we would not have been able to complete that presentation. And our community members would have had to go to their computers to utilize our pull down from board docs the presentation. So this all came from a discussion around this returning in October, which I'm sure we are all looking forward to. Um, but it's just to ensure that our facility is is capable to handle all of the new equipment and to do technology in a way that a request was made to see if we could potentially have members to um participate from home for the public comment piece. And in order to do that, we also would need the projector and screen for that. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Dr. Golson. Uh, Mr. Zuckerman, are you still there? Um, I, um, my concern is, well, I won't say it's a concern, my question. There is a difference between that projector being a commercial as opposed to what we would consider a domestic type of uh projector. Am I correct?
Um, the, yes, to the extent that the, just when you're dealing with a room of that size and there's just specifications that are required in terms of distance that just add cost to a projector for a room of that size. Um, certainly, if we're using, if we're talking about a classroom, we would have a smaller LCD projector that you would set up on a desk. Uh, but for our lot, large auditoriums in our high schools or the board auditorium, this is the standard model for for this type of thing. There's and 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 this also, as I said earlier, this moves from from standard def to to HD, which would, as Dr. Golson said, as we, over the next several years, continue to make upgrades, we'll be able to have a better visual experience with this projector than uh than an older model.
Thank you. Uh, Board Member Burrows.
Yeah, I would just say uh to my colleagues, to Board Member Thomas's point, um, and to Board Member Valentine's point. Uh, I'm hearing that there is a a need um to do this uh in order for uh the functionality of in-person meetings, which I support. I would encourage us as colleagues, when the budget time comes for us to um, what we call, uh, keep that same energy as it relates to a teacher or school supply budget. Um, there is not a school year that goes by where I don't have teachers reaching out to me for paper, pencils. Uh, even in prior years, and I I would assume it would be different now into COVID, I had custodians. I had custodians saying, hey, I'm having to come out my money cleaning supplies. You know, I would assume assume that that won't be the case this year because of COVID. But but when it's time to allocate resources for our teachers who are in the classroom for basic supplies that they need to do their jobs, we should have this exact same position that if that's what you need to function, we're going to give it to you. And I just wanted to to highlight that because I definitely understood board member Thomas's point around that. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to follow up on our board member Burrows. You shared with me some time ago that sometimes in our, we don't expend all the the funds in our budget. And at the end of the fiscal year, that those funds go into what I thought was a black hole. They go into a general fund. And my question to, I guess, all, well, my question is, and whoever can answer it, is there some way that we as the board can, before that, at the, before we close out the end of the year and see that we have quote funds, additional funds that have not been utilized? Can we, is there some way we can direct that overage to the the teachers or some fund that would filter down to the teachers and and other resources that are needed?
Yes, you do have the ability to do that before the day.
Thank you. So at the end of the year, when we are told that we have X amount of dollars still left in our budget, then my suggestion would be that the board take a vote and determine where those funds could be allocated. Is that correct, Dr. Golson?
Yeah, I'm just making a note, end of the year is now June 30th. If it's May when we close off.
Correct. We would do this in April. I guess we would be able to have an idea of what would be, what funds would be left over in our budget. Board member Queen.
I think that's a great idea, Madam Chair, to put it up. Almost feel like we need to make a motion to bring that back to our April meeting to make sure. But one of the things I was going to say, as board member Burrows and the other board members were stating, I think that was one of the reason why I just so love board member Ahmed. The way she come up with things when it comes to the cost and overspending on projects. And one of the reasons we were asking about our audit tech, because that extra money we're spending on them projects could be used for things that we need that can get us out the stone age in our county and bring us up the pod, just like this projector, just like our teachers having supplies, just like our schools having new desks and so many other things that are needed. If we didn't have to waste so much extra money, spending millions of dollars, unnecessary dollars on projects or because things were being held up. So I definitely do agree, but we have to find other ways to make sure that we're cracking down on saving that money. Thank you so very much.
And we've talked about the cost of the projector to the public. And the, now, correct me, Mr. Dr. Zuckerman, the cost range for the type of projector that we need is in the 30 to what it, what is the range?
So the total awarded contract is 34,000 and and change. The projector itself is, we can get anywhere between 15 to 20. This one happens to be 20. And then on top of that, we have labor installation fees. We have wiring upgrades that need to be made as well as ongoing service contracts for several years after the installation and warranty. So that's what we get with this. It's it's standard. The company that we're using has done boards of education in the state of Maryland. They've they've done our board, they've done our high school auditorium, very reputable. And so this is, you know, this, this is what it costs, as board members have said, to to do the upgrades and to modernize technology equipment. And I will say there, you know, once, once we put this in, it'll still be a little bit of time before the installation occurs because just supply chain issues. So it's important that we do this, do this sooner rather than later so we can be ready because the 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 current projector just is achieving, it's reaching its its end of life. And that's that just happens with technology equipment as we all, from our our own home equipment to computers. At some point, they just begin to reach their end of life. And that's where we are with the current projector.
Thank you, Dr. Zuckerman. I just wanted the public to understand that it's not just the mach, the equipment itself that costs in the 30,000, but that includes the whole packet of installation, labor, et cetera, and upgrading some electrical, the electrical systems as well. Thank you. So Da, Vice Chair Williams.
I just wanted to have a comment and to encourage my colleagues to respond to the Obama request for budget recommendations. There is a, a, I guess, a Google Doc that's out asking board members to provide their recommendations for the budget. These kinds of conversations or these thoughts is where we start this process. We have to be very mindful that we don't mix apples and oranges when we talk about the capital budget versus operating dollars and versus personnel dollars and things like that. And I think that it may be a good topic for the Obama committee to discuss, to understand what the current budget is for each teacher in their school supplies and how it's used. And then determine how much we should add to it in the budget for next year. So those are just my comments.
Thank you. Are there any more comments, questions in reference to the digital, digital laser project, purchase of the digital laser projector? If not, calling for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed?
No.
No.
Roll call, please, Ms. Berkeley.
Yes, ma'am. Mrs. Adam Stafford.
Aye.
Mrs. Ahmed.
No.
Ms. Boozer Strather.
Yes.
Mr. Burrows.
Aye.
Mr. Harris.
Aye.
Mrs. Mickens Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Montero.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
No.
Mrs. Queen.
Yes.
Mr. Thomas.
No.
Mr. Valentine.
Aye.
Mrs. Williams.
Yes.
And Dr. Miller.
Yes.
Nine ayes, three nays, one abstention.
Thank you. The motion carries. We will be purchasing a new digital laser projector. Next will be governance. Dr. Golson, would you please introduce item 6.1, please?
Yes, item 6.1 requires board approval of fiscal year 2023 to through 2028 capital improvement program as a second reading.
May I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I believe there was a budget committee recommendation. Motion can be made based on that. That was a point of order. Thank you.
Would you read the recommendation?
I'm sorry, Madam Chair, is that for me or is that for the board budget chair woman?
The board budget chairperson.
All right, Ms. Queen.
I'm sorry, what was I asked to do to read the motion?
No. The recommendation that came from the budget committee. The budget committee voted to bring the bring to the board the recommendation made by board member Ahmed. Board member Ahmed, would you read the motion for board member Queen, please?
I don't have that on me.
Sure, I can do that. The Operations Budget and Fiscal Affairs Committee held a virtual meeting on September 15th with the following members in attendance. Ms. Queen as committee chair, Mr. Harris as vice chair, Ms. Boozer Strather, Dr. Miller and David Murray. Board member Sheila Adam Stafford joined the meeting as a guest. The committee discussed the CEO's recommended fiscal year 23 to 28 capital improvement plan. And after a robust discussion, the committee voted to recommend that the Board of Education make the following amendments to the fiscal year 2023 to 2028 CIP, taken from a memorandum written by myself, board member Ahmed. And that says, all capital project requests to have a 2.5% cap on contingency funds, 5% cap on architectural and engineering fees, 4% cap on CMR general conditions allocations, 3% cap on movable equipment FFNE and 2% cap on DCP administrative expenses. And so I move on behalf of the committee that recommendation with the amendment. And and I I will speak to that later. My apologies, Ms. Queen, if I stepped on the situation. I just wanted to assist.
Question, but our board member Valentine.
So I I I assume since it's a board, it's a committee, doesn't need a second, so we're in discussion right now?
Yes.
That's correct. It's just a question for you, board member Ahmed, and then for Dr. Golson. Those figures, 2%, 2.5%, 5, 4, are those arbitrary or are they based on anything? And secondly, Dr. Golson, if this passes, how will that impact our ability to 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 carry out the goals and expectations of our projects moving forward?
I can speak to the first part, Mr. Valentine. I included information, it's all based on industry standards and there are people that are a lot smarter than me. So I took the advice of of experts and folks that were able to advise on industry standards and what is appropriate based upon state recommendations and requirements. And so that's how I put those numbers together. It's also outlined in the proposal. I do understand administration has a different perspective, so I'll yield to them. Thank you.
Board members. We presented a response to board member Ahmed and posted it. It's dated September 21st and it's posted in board docs around each of the provisions. In addition, we're in conversation now with the Interagency for School Construction about Garell, the director who sent us an email today at 11:34 with some comments around statements that we made, which we are now in, we are now working through and we'll have a meeting with him scheduled for tomorrow. So for each of her requests, we've also put our comments on those that we do, that we're not in support with in the rationale.
And and so is, I'm sorry, is is it your recommendation to take a vote on this or is or is it further information that you need in order to respond to some of the questions that or the the policy that's been recommended?
Yeah, for each of the categories. So there's, I think there were three or four provisions that board member Ahmed presented. We provided a response for each one of those on why we are not in agreement with it. And I think that is where Parliamentarian Shelton would have to come into place because I, as the CEO, have already presented a recommendation before the board. And I'm not sure how this amendment affects mine since in order to overturn my recommendation, it requires a two vote.
Thank you.
The next comment, board member Adam Stafford. Board member Adam Stafford.
Okay, thank you so much. So I wanted to talk a little bit about the proposed change for the architectural and engineering fees from 7% to 5%. And this question was for Mr. Matlock. So Mr. Matlock, you stated in the Obama meeting and in your letter that the state recommends a 10% cap on a architectural and engineering fees. And I have researched the IAC website and it says the state is willing to participate in up to 10% of all planning and design fees. So I guess it will first, is that your understanding as well?
Yes. To be clear, to be clear, our NE line item is more than just architectural and engineering fees. It also includes a lot of the planning fees that the AIC pays for. So under that 10%, they recommend 6% specifically for architects and engineers from what I understand from Mr. Garell. And then they 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 their 10% goes up to other fees. We include those other fees in a lot of situations in our, in our, in our number, in our 7% number.
Okay, but but you're saying that the state can participate in up to 10% of the fees. Okay, so I I guess my question is, why haven't we decided to request the additional state funding for these projects? So like, why are we not maximizing those state contributions on some of our really, you know, our much needed projects? You know, for example, when I think about, you know, Suitland High School, the Suitland Project, you know, if we were able to get that additional construction cost, that would be like $12 million. So, you know, I want to know, like, why are we leaving that on the table when it comes to funding that we can receive for for the state?
So initially, so there's two things, uh, two statements. First, it's new. They just, they just passed, this is like within the last year, that they're participating or allowing a participation in design fees. They're also now allowing a participation in FFNE as well, but it is not additional money. It's a, it's a deduction from the total 73% participation. So basically, you're moving one bit of money from one construction expenditure over to design so that you, so your construction money would go down by 10%. I mean, by by that, the equal number that you're increasing your design money. You're not actually getting more money.
Okay, thank you.
What, Dr. Golson, did you have a response?
Wanted to make note that we will, I will provide the, was the letter from Mr. Garell and our response to him and a summary of our notes with our meeting with him that we're trying to get scheduled for tomorrow.
Thank you. Vice Chair Williams.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As always, I'm I'm always wondering, when we make a change, what is the expected outcome? And when do we expect to see that outcome? So I guess that question is for the maker of the motion or the recommendation. What what are you expecting to see out of making these changes to the budget? The budgetary process? What are you expecting to see? And when do you expect to see it? And how do you expect that to be reported to us?
Thank you. I think that's being addressed to me. Ms. Williams, I can address that when I have my time. It's part of what I would like to to touch base on, so I'll address it.
Yeah, because I'm I'm always challenged with making changes just to make changes. And there, there are a lot of moving parts when we're talking about whether or not it's a budget or if it's a proposal or if it's a bid or if it's the actual dollars that we set aside and appropriate for the work. And so I think we have to be very mindful of which dollars we're associating with. And then we have to determine, is it the design fees? Is it the study fees? If it's the construction fees? Because when Ms. Adam Stafford just spoke, she spoke about the architectural fee, but then she said something about construction dollars. So I want to make sure that we're not mixing apples and oranges when we're talking about this. But I really want to understand what is the expected outcome so that we can determine if if these changes will make the 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 desired outcome. And based on the comments that the CEO has placed in response to these recommendations, I think that we need a little bit more interaction with the staff to get a better understanding before we can make a an educated vote on such a change. And maybe this can be moved to the next year when we do the CIP planning so that all of us understand what is expected to come from this change. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Williams. Mr. Shelton, your hand is up and I guess it's a response to Dr. Golson's request for you.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Dr. I think what Dr. Golson was, is going to ask how we get beyond this dilemma. And I think how we get beyond this dilemma, if you forgive me for a characterization as such, you you make a motion to either lay it on the table, you make a motion to postpone it indefinitely. The probably the best thing to do here is to make a motion to postpone it for a definite time. Make a motion to postpone it to the next meeting or whenever you want. But if you postpone it for a definite time, then you know when it's going to come up again and people can do some further research. But you could also postpone indefinitely, it won't come up again unless somebody raises it again. So those are your options. Lay it on the table, postpone it indefinitely or postpone it for a certain time.
So are we postpone, are you saying we are postponing the amendment or the actual vote on our capital improvement program?
I thought based on what I understood Dr. Golson saying and 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 board member Amar, that there are some differences in opinion as to how her motion might be impacted by Dr. Golson's.
Dr. Golson's figures as opposed to Board Member Ammar's figures. I think if that's true, the most sensible thing to do is just to delay it for a certain point in time to allow the two of them to reconcile their differences. And then you can vote intelligently. Without doing that, you're not voting intelligently, in my opinion.
Dr. Golson.
I just wanted to make a note that we have a deadline to adhere to, which is October 4th in order to meet the CIP request. We have had this item posted for over a month now. And the recommendations presented by Board Member Ahmed were just recent. So if we're talking about tabling and having further conversation and review and discussion, then my recommendation would be, it would be on the recommended amendments, not the actual board summary that's been presented for over a month.
Okay, Board Member Ahmed, are you willing to, I won't say, put your amendment on hold for further discussion for next year? So that we can move forward with our vote for this year's or capital improvement program? Or when I say this year, the FY 2028?
Yes, Madam Chair, I would like to vote on approving the budget with the amendments that were approved by the Board Budget Committee. And when you're able, I will begin my time to speak on, for my turn.
Board Member Mickens Murray.
To my colleagues, I say this. The administration gave us a document and I think it's like seven pages because I sat here and I read them all. And I believe to my colleague Ahmed, I think they addressed every issue you raised. Did you not see anything in this document to change your mind about any of your positions? Maybe one of them, or two of them?
But yes, yes, Ms. Mickens Murray, there is one area of compromise that I wanted to provide, but I'm waiting for my time to be able to.
Okay. Well, the, the other, the other point that I will attempt to make, because I don't claim to be an expert in construction, but I do know a little bit about budgets. And I think it's a little late for any of us to make recommendations to change in a CIP budget. I think if the Budget Committee wanted to do justice, they should take this under their umbrella for this year. You know when we vote for CIP next year. So if you feel strongly about these new percentages should change and all of that, then I would suggest you make your argument, you come back to the board because you have time to do it for next year. But you're hamstringing the staff, the, the administration. If you impose this recommendation at this point in time, it's the timing. It's not so much that some of what you're saying does not have merit. It's the timing of what you're bringing. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Murray. Board Member Queen.
As the budget chair person, can I just say, it was brought to the budget chair and the reason why I was so accepted of it, this is not the first year. I've been on the budget committee for three years. And Ms. Ahmed had brought these issues three years straight in a row. And nothing has been done. So at this point, whether you guys want to discuss it or talk about it, it has to be done. This has been three years in a row and I don't, I cannot believe, my intuition is not letting me to believe that someone will bring something like this to us three years in a row? And that's not realizing that it's something more to this. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Board Member Ahmed.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I did want to just thank the members of the Budget Committee for their support on these common sense spending caps that I proposed regarding our capital budget projects. I mentioned this before, but I've done a lot of research and I spoke to different individuals and colleagues to bring this forward. And I'm really grateful that those conversations have led to today. These amendments that I have, they were, they were proposed last year are really born out of the desire to ensure efficient use of our local county funds so that we can have money to spend on other dire construction needs in our school district. And the desire was also to establish some guidelines around spending that are aligned with the state and industry guidelines as well. And so colleagues, for your awareness, all of the five areas where my, where the amendments are suggested are 100% funded through our local tax dollars by local taxpayers. And I want to be sure that we're doing right by everyone at home in how we're spending our money. And so I did hear some colleagues before, before this meeting and also at this meeting, talking about wanting to be involved in state fund participation. And I don't want to limit the board at all with these, with these caps. And so with that in mind, this is my point of consensus, Ms. Mickens Murray, is that I did, I will add a friendly amendment to the motion that says these spending caps are applicable over county funds and doesn't stop the PGCPS Department of Capital Programs to pursue funding from the state in any of the amended categories. So that's the friendly amendment I'll add. And I do hope for y'all's support on these amendments. I think at this point in time, I, I did bring it to the Budget Committee. I did bring it forward in a different rendition last year. And I, I would just appreciate us to vote on it and we can move forward with whatever way the vote comes out to be. Thank you.
Mr. Shelton.
Mr. Ahmad, first, I appreciate, it seems like your willingness to try to make a concession. The problem from a parliamentary procedure point of view, you've got to make a motion before you can then make a motion to amend the motion. And I don't think I've heard a motion properly stated yet. So you're trying to make a friendly amendment to a motion that doesn't even exist yet from.
Sure, I can clarify, Mr. Shelton. The motion is to approve the, the budget with the amendment that was recommended and approved by the Board Budget Committee. That was approved by the Board Budget Committee.
Board Member Murray. Mickens Murray.
Thank you. I guess what's coming into question for me now is how five members in a committee can have the power to bring a, a recommendation that automatically becomes a motion? Because I would think that the administration, if they're bringing us a, a recommendation, that recommendation should be the first thing that we entertain. So maybe there needs to be some looking back at some policies because it doesn't make sense to me. It really doesn't. We, we have an administration that has done a lot of work and, and to my colleague Ahmed, I have not seen anything that tells me that the 2% or the 3% in the last three or four years that somehow there were cost overruns. No one has provided that information to me. If you've provided to the others, I don't have it. So I don't see the basis, I don't see where you've laid the basis to hamstring the administration this year. And that's why I continue to say, if the Budget Committee really wants to handle this, then you have to go back and look at some projects that you've had over the last four or five years and come back, well, I would say more than that because CIP takes a while to, to be, to finish. So I would say you need to come back to us and show us at least one project where, where what you would suggest that might happen, where it happened. Thank you.
I see Ms. Berkeley's hand up. Is there some concern?
Yes, ma'am. I just need Ms. Ahmed to repeat her amendment.
Friendly amendment, Ms. Berkeley.
Excuse me, first of all, are there other there other people who have their hands up? So can you get that from her after these comments are made? Okay. Mr. Shelton, your hand was up.
Yeah, and I hate to keep interrupting. But I thought that Board Member Ahmad was making the motion for the first time. At least so that I could understand it. If she was making a motion, then I never heard a second to the motion. Now, if she had previously already made a motion in a second, then what I would suggest is, I'm hoping you got something in writing to give to Ms. Berkeley. So we'll know what we actually voted on. So you got to first have something in writing. It's a written motion. When Ms. Berkeley has that and everybody's satisfied they know what they're talking about, then you can make a motion to amend the motion that she has. But right now, where are we?
Mr. Shelton, that's the Budget Committee Chair. The motion was made in my Budget Committee. It's actually on our board docs already. Ms. Ahmed read the motion and it was moved on behalf of the committee, which means that was the motion right then and there. It was moved on behalf of the committee. And so that was the motion.
Okay. So everybody understands it. I step back there.
That's okay.
Point of clarification, though. I thought that the understanding is that a committee brings a report. And then we vote on a motion. So first, we have to accept the report. And then it's turned into a motion. Is that correct, Mr. Shelton?
Yeah, normally you would accept the report and then after the report is accepted, you can take action on the recommendations, the individual recommendations. If you want to bypass that, I mean, basically, when they say the committee's done this, you've basically accepted the report anyway. You've heard it. So if you want to skip that extra step and just go, I think the motion now is simply to accept the recommendations that they made on such and such a time. And if that's the motion, then that motion would be in order.
There's.
I agree.
Go on.
I, I just wanted to say, I agree if that motion was unanimously approved by the committee and I don't believe that this one was. And so I think that's where we're having the challenge, that there are too many board members that are not on the same page. And it sounds like, because there are two reasons. One, because board members do not have all of the information that the maker of the, the request is, is leaning on. And two, we have a CEO who does not agree with it. And so there is a conflict, a misunderstanding. And so we're asking to vote on something that is not clear.
Board Member Boozer Struther.
Thank you, Chair Miller. Just to respect the process, should I continue with the substance of the, the document or no at this point?
What, that's up to you.
All right, well, others did, so I'll, I'll just go ahead. I, I, I did want to state, I think, to colleague Mickens Murray that in fact, it was just three members of the Budget Committee and, and this motion was not brought forward by a member of, of the committee. It was, I found the process to be outside of, I think, you know, procedures and respect of each other's colleagues that this came about 24 hours before that September 15th meeting. I do want to give a shout out to Mr. Matlock for being able to respond so quickly. There is a recording of that meeting on September 15th for all of these reasons now in writing, but stated during that, that meeting and I, I was, as a committee member, a no vote on this. And I did just want to state for the record that I don't think it's typical that I would have 24 hours to have to not only understand administration's own data, knowledge and research on this topic, but then verify research done by a colleague. I don't think we typically offer a single colleague who is not in this field. So I want to say that I, I hope we can improve upon these processes in the future. And the, the recommendation to, to start over for a year, you know, I think is not a bad recommendation so that, so that we can at least give this the due that our colleague is asking of us. But I, I am a no vote today.
You're a no vote for?
For these amendments.
The recommendations, okay. Board Member Valentine.
Thank you. And you know, this is a process that many of us have gone through over the years to approve the CIP. There are a couple of things at play. One, meaning we have a deadline that we have to meet. We also have recommendation from the CEO, which by law requires two thirds of the board to overturn it. And it would, to me, seem like this particular amendment would be overturning the recommendation of the CEO, which would require two thirds, which we're not at the voting point. I don't want to assume anything. But at the same time, we do have a board member who in a, in a committee that has done, you know, a, a ton of work. And I appreciate the spirit in which the work was done. I, I definitely look to Board Member Ahmed and Board Member Williams in many ways in this space because of the work that you all do, particularly in ensuring that we hold the administration accountable. And so, you know, again, just in the spirit of collegiality, I mean, my recommendation is to take a vote on the CIP to ensure that we are meeting the deadline. And that we consider the recommendations as a, as an amendment and, and vote on that separately, but not let this impede our ability to meet the deadline that is set for October.
Thank you, Board Member. Mr. Shelton, did you have a comment?
Well, yeah, I, I kind of like where Mr. Valentine's going. But I also felt from what I heard from Board Member Boozer Struther, it's questionable whether or not this could even be considered a committee recommendation. UCAS kept talking about it had been posted and it was in writing somewhere. I just assumed that the committee itself was in consensus that this was in fact a committee recommendation. If it's not a committee recommendation, then it shouldn't be presented as such. And then again, I think Mr. Valentine makes the most sense that I tried to say earlier. You got to step back and try to consider what's going on. I think that's where Valentine was going with his motion.
Thank you, Mr. Shelton. What member, Borrowes? What member Borrowes?
Yes, I have a question for Mr. Matlock. Can, can you describe what the contingency fund is designed to do?
I would defer to Sheila Taylor. She has more detailed information on that, how we use it.
Awesome. Good evening, everyone. So the contingency fund, we have it is within projects. And one of the things this mandate would do would just take away our ability to do more in the face of such high need. This just mandates that in order to maintain the budget, we just do less. I, I have some project specifics because I don't even know if you understand what contingency funds have been used to do. So if you look at a school like Bowie High School Annex, we were able to abate the blackboards and tack boards, install new marker boards, do asbestos abatement throughout the schools, replace the floors, add composite wall panels, add additional classroom and corridor painting throughout the school, replace damaged classroom doors and hardware, and add whiteboards in the modular classrooms. We also had contingency outside the contract, which really funded a lot of the Phase 2 work, like the replacement of the gym floor and bleachers and converting the gym adjacent to the ADA to an ADA compliant restroom. And, and the issue is, it's just a really great tool when you have over $3 billion in deferred maintenance and we don't have the $420 million a year to modernize the inventory. So when you're in the school already and you have a contractor there, often you get very competitive pricing for them to go across the hall and do the work that the school needs. So when you're asking capital programs to just do less, you know, that's something we've historically been bad at doing in the face of such high need. So this just does that. It just mandates that we will have to do less.
Yeah, I'm not, I, I don't understand that that's the intent. I think the intent is that.
That's the result.
If I could finish my sentence, thank you. I think your department has historically issued significant change orders that have blindsided the board.
That's very different.
If I can just finish, thank you. That, that had blindsided the board. And what I understand the maker of this proposal intent is, is to increase the transparency. Because we are, and I've, I've been on the board for quite some time, and, and the amount of change orders that have come from this department, in my opinion, have been astronomical. And so can, can you speak to that issue? How, how do we resolve the change order issue within that department?
With love for you to look at our change order rates and compare to.
Hold on, hold on two minutes. I'm recognizing this Taylor Jackson.
Go ahead. I, I really would love the opportunity to provide you with our change order rates over the years because they actually have been historically low. And I'm honestly not sure that that represents the best use of dollars. You have a very high need. And when you already have contractors in the building, what you have is an opportunity to fix the deferred maintenance issues. You have the opportunity to provide more to the students, often at a competitive pricing. Because again, the contractors are already in the building. The change orders you see honestly are a portion of what you should actually see. If we were spending the way we did have a record high. If we were spending the way we did have a record high year last year, but if we were always spending that way, you should see more change orders. You should see more work being done. Because what you also have to realize is at the end of a project, we don't have a savings account for $20 billion or $20 million for a project, right? We're funded by bond sales as we spend money. So if we leave a lot of money on a project, it doesn't go to another project. It's sometimes just a missed opportunity to recognize the student need in a building, right? So we really do have low change order rate, with the exception of Central High School. That did change last year's change order rate. Even that is representative of work that needed to be done and that our students deserve to have. So that is not where our budget increases are coming.
And I think auditing to figure it out independently, frankly.
You've done that, and I would please, I would love for you to look at those audit reports. They showed that we were historically low. The Ernst & Young showed that. The state audit showed that we are low in change order rates in past years.
Can you talk about also the issue with the tickets? Because I know firsthand of schools that were built, but were not finished, and contractors walked away. And there was still work that was not supposed, work that was supposed to be done that wasn't done. Can you talk a little bit more about that?
I don't know what a ticket is. What's a ticket?
It is my understanding that there is a punch list. Maybe that's a better way of phrasing it. Are you familiar with the punch list?
Absolutely. So that's a different thing too. So we report on substantial completion, right? So once you have beneficial occupancy and you're using a building as it was designed, or if it's just a system replacement and you're using the system as it was intended to be using, that is the definition of substantial completion. It's just the legal definition. And so that's what we follow. After that, right, you do have a punch list. And so you have punch list items, you have corrective work. You might have items DEPI requires for a permanent occupancy. We do that, and then that's when we move to final completion. There are certainly projects where there are many issues, whether it's a DEPI closeout issue or it's an ongoing contractor issue where that has lingered, but that is not a common state on the majority of our projects.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. Mr. Shelton, you have your hand up.
Yes, ma'am. I think Mr. Valentine correctly stated that if you vote to approve the motion made by Board Member Amad, you would effectively nullify the recommendations from Dr. Golson, and that requires a two-thirds vote. Two-thirds of 14 is going to be 10. So I think, you know, go ahead and run it. If you think you're going to get 10 people to support it, fine. If you don't, it's a dead issue.
So are you?
I don't care what you do. It seems to me that you just, I don't, again, maybe I'm wrong, but I don't see that you would get 10 votes to support Mr. Amad's motion. And I think Mr. Valentine is correct that it's going to require 10 votes in this case. Because the way I count, two-thirds of 14 is 10. And I think there are 14 board members. So if you can't.
One board member can't vote. It's 13.
Okay, well, two-thirds is 13. I actually have the numbers here to tell me what they are because I don't do the math. If the number is 13, then you're going to have to get nine to over, you know, you'd have to get nine people to pass Ms. Amad's motion because her motion would effectively nullify the recommendation from Dr. Golson's staff.
Okay, I'm going to ask board members. I know two board members have their hands raised, and I ask for your indulgence. Is the board, because we're getting, it's 10 o'clock. And we're not, I'm not going into 12 midnight again. Can I get from the board members an agreement that we will move to vote on the CIP with the amendment? Can we move forward with the vote?
I'm sorry.
With the CIP itself?
Without.
Yes, for the CIP, as Board Member Valentine recommended, for the CIP as recommended by the CEO.
CEO.
And then the second vote would be to approve the amendment recommended by Board Member Ahmed.
But would that amendment, again, nullify the CEO's recommendation? Does it two contradict one another is the question?
I think so. I mean, if you're going to vote to approve the recommendation made by Dr. Golson, then it wouldn't make sense to then in turn approve the recommendation made by Board Member Amad because Board Member Amad's recommendation would effectively got completely nullified, a recommendation made by Dr. Golson.
Okay, thank you. Board Member Queen, you have something to say before we move forward?
I just want to make a correction that was stated, and just so Mr. Shelton can actually get better clarity. In the Budget Committee, we have five members. And three members voted for this. So that means that was the majority, and that's how it was able to move forth. It was not that, it did not come through with the majority. I think what Board Member Boozer struggled was trying to say is that two members didn't vote for it. But it doesn't, if we had the majority of the vote, it moves forward to the next. I just wanted to clarify that.
Oh, you're absolutely right. The majority vote, we're getting out of committee, but we're beyond that now. Where we are now is.
Clarify that statement.
Yes, ma'am. I appreciate your correction.
Board Member Laurie.
Thank you, Dr. Miller. I'm a bit confused by the two-thirds ruling here. My understanding is that it's the board's CIP budget to approve, that it would not require two-thirds majority. And so I'm a bit confused about the interpretation of that and where that came from.
I think.
What I said, and again, I just make suggestion to you, you do as you please. From my understanding, Mr. Valentine said that there is either a bylaw or policy or statute that requires a two-thirds vote of this board to nullify a recommendation made by Dr. Golson's shop. If that is in fact true, then that's where it came from. Now, you guys have been here a lot longer than I have. If you're saying that's not true, then we'll go.
Yeah, what I have in front of me doesn't have the word "recommendation" in it at all as it relates to two-thirds, so I would say that that is not true.
But what do you have in front of you?
The law that governs what you're referencing, HB 1107.
Okay, well, but again, then again.
Maybe I can bring some clarification in here. Dr. Golson has made a recommendation. And we are to vote on the recommendation made by Dr. Golson. My understanding is that to overturn her recommendation, it would take a two-thirds vote. So if we vote now to accept the recommendation of the capital improvement program made by Dr. Golson, well, first we have to have a motion. And that's what has not taken place yet. And I believe that's where Mr. Board Member Murray, David Murray's question is that we have not taken a motion, but there's no motion on the floor yet to approve the recommendation of Dr. Golson. So now we need a motion to approve the recommendation, which is on second reader for the fiscal year 2023-2028 Capital Improvement Program. We've had.
Sorry, one brief, one last point of order, Dr. Miller. I'm sorry, if, this question's for Mr. Shelton, if.
Well, you got to say. And then I will instruct him.
Okay. If the decision of the, if it's the decision of the chair, the ruling of the chair, that it requires two-thirds for this motion, can we move to overrule the chair?
You're not overruling me.
My understanding, the way Mr. Valentine stated it, this is a matter of policy. This is a matter of law. This is a matter of a regulation somewhere. So it's not overruling Dr. Miller. It's simply following the policy, the guidelines, the statute, or whatever exists. Everything doesn't need to be a vote. Dr. Miller has the authority to take informal polls. I would ask by show of hands, how many of you believe that there is a requirement that you got to have a two-thirds vote? And I think if most of you believe that that's the policy, then this argument is academic. It's a waste of time. And again, I'm relying on your knowledge. I'm assuming if mostly you believe that that's the policy, you're probably correct. You're more so correct than I am. Because we can't stop every night and read a different statute and read, go to different things. So I'm assuming some of you know what you're doing. And I hear from majority of you, I think, by the way you're shaking your heads, that a two-thirds vote is required. And I'm not willing to go with that rather than have somebody say, well, I got a law here, and I don't know what the law is, and I don't see it.
Madam Chair.
Board Member Sheila Adams Stafford.
Yes, just for clarity, we're voting on the recommendations from the OBFA Committee and the amendments from Board Member Ahmed on the CIP budget, which is controlled by the board. Am I clear, are we, am I clear on that that's what we're voting on?
We are voting on, Dr. Golson introduced item 6.1, FY 2023-28 Capital Improvement Program. We are to vote on her recommendation. If we have to get a motion to approve her recommendation. There's no motion out there yet.
Yes, it is, the board.
I'm trying to understand, is she making a recommendation? Or we're, she's, she's, my understanding is not that she's recommending that we vote on the budget. It's that we are voting on the budget and Board Member Ahmed has made an amendment, and we're voting on the amendment.
Can I try to answer the question?
Yes, Mr. Shelton.
A lot of you shaking your heads that there is a motion. Technically, the motion is not made until the chairperson states this is the motion. To the best of my knowledge, Dr. Miller has not said this is the motion because we don't have any real clarification of what's going on. A person makes a motion, you get a second to the motion, and then the chair says, this is the motion. Are we ready for the vote? Until Dr. Miller says to the entire assembly, this is the motion. Are we ready for the vote? We really don't have a motion in front of us.
Thank you, Mr. Shelton.
Adam Stafford, there is no motion for this committee, for this board to consider at this time. My understanding is, Mr. Amad's motion does, is presented as a question to vote on, you got to have a two-thirds vote to carry it. If you vote not to approve Dr. Golson's recommendations, you got to have a two-thirds vote to do that. That's my understanding.
Point of order, Dr. Miller. I have put the motion on the floor several times. And the motion is to approve the budget with the amendment that has been recommended by the Budget Committee.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Mr. Amad. I didn't mean to say that you hadn't put the motion. I'm saying, in order for these people to consider the motion, the chair has to state to this board that this is what the motion is. I've never heard that second step from Dr. Miller. This is the motion in front of me now. Because you got to have some clarification as to what you're voting on. And that clarification has to come from the chair before a vote can take place.
Thank you. And point of order here too, this has not happened with the other votes that we just voted on. We voted on a slew of votes at this meeting. Not every single one of them were repeated by the chair.
As I said.
Pretty much all of them were.
As I said in our closed session, if I see no harm, if it's harmless error, I'm going to let it go. Because quite frankly, there's a number of things you guys don't do by the rules of parliamentary procedure. And if I stop you every time, you're going to be here all night. But now, it looks like you guys are demanding we follow the rules of parliamentary procedure. And given that that's the demand, I'm telling you that Dr. Miller has to state that motion for everybody to understand it before he can call for a vote.
And I did state the motion earlier that we approved. Now, I did state it, and if we have to play it back, I will have it played back. The motion was to approve the FY 2023-28 Capital Improvement Program with amendments as presented by Ms. Ahmed.
I stand corrected.
Is there a second?
I can.
There's a second to approve the FY 23-28 Capital Improvement Program with amendment made by Board Member Ahmed. I'm calling for the vote. We've had lengthy discussion.
I have a question, point of clarification.
Yes.
If this vote fails because it still needs two-thirds voted to overturn, what happens? Can we bring this back up?
You can bring it back up. If this fails with the way it has been stated, you can come back and make a motion to accept or approve the FY 23-28 Capital Improvement Program as recommended by the chief. The CEO.
Because I just want to make clear that someone made a motion, someone seconded it. We're in discussion now. And that if there are votes that are not, if not more than nine people vote for this, or nine or more, someone say it passed, and then there will be a dispute over whether this is an overturn or an approval. And I want to be clear that we don't get to that point before it happens because it is standard that if the CEO brings, and again, we've done this for eight years, if the CEO brings a recommendation on behalf of the CEO, that it takes the majority of the board to overturn it. It's just, you know, and so if the idea is that we're going to bring this forward with the recommendation, you can, or an amendment, which will nullify the vote itself, we would be out of line with, you know, the law.
Yeah, I, 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 I'm sorry, go ahead.
Vice Chair Williams.
I think that you're stating it 95% correct. The way she. Valentine.
Okay.
Board Member Valentine. Because this action would be something different than what the CEO is recommending. It takes nine votes for it to pass. If the nine, we do not reach nine votes, then we go back to the original motion, which is the CEO's recommendation with no amendments. Even with that, in order for it to pass, well, in order for it to fail, we have to reach nine votes. That is what she's saying. So the way this amendment is going on right now, in order for us to accept the amendment, it takes nine votes. With the nine votes, that changes the CEO's recommendation. It takes nine votes to change the CEO's recommendation. Now, if it fails, we go back to the original CEO's recommendation with no amendments. The CEO's recommendation, in order for us to fail her recommendation, it takes nine votes. So it's sort of complex, but I.
Okay, can we call for the vote? Let's call for the vote. The motion, we've had lengthy discussions. With that, I'm going to repeat the motion as I stated before. It is to approve the FY 2023-28 Capital Improvement Program with amendments presented by Board Member Ahmed.
You have two hands up. I'm sorry, Board Member Thomas and myself.
I call for the vote, Board Member Curtis, let me Valentine.
I just wanted to show the policy because we were looking for that. I have the word-for-word policies. I just wanted to share with the group, that's all.
Okay, Board Member Thomas, do you mind if he goes before you? Thomas.
I think I'll just make my remarks quick, which is just that, I mean, clearly, there's a clear disagreement, you know, between many members of the board here about whether we are voting on the budget as is, along with the recommendations, versus whether we are voting on Dr. Golson's recommendations particularly. And so, you know, there again is disagreement about whether this requires a simple majority vote versus a two-thirds vote. And so my personal thought is that I don't think any of us, unless Mr. Valentine, what he's pulled is the sufficient information to draw any conclusions. I don't think we're going to be able to clearly come to any conclusions together considering we do not have a board legal counsel to advise us on what the correct information is. So I just want to be clear that I think, you know, we need to, we do need to move forward with taking a vote. But I think it would be incorrect for any of us to definitively say that it passes or fails one way or the other until we have real clarity around it, that's all. I mean, we both are, we are all clearly divided on this one, and no one in this specific room can. All clearly divided on this one and no one in this specific room can uh you know, with clarity, give actual a hundred percent factual information.
Uh Board Member Adam Stafford.
Uh I believe I was next, Dr..
Oh, I apologize. You took your hand down, uh Board Member Valentine. I apologize.
Oh, no, I I I just want to be clear. I mean, I I I understand my my colleagues' uh points, but. You know, I believe, you know, um it's important that we, you know, follow the law, uh which I think we all would agree. And it says, you know, section four, four zero three of the bill. Except for personal matters and appeals of personal matters in accordance with four dash two zero five, C two and C three of this title. And six point two zero two of this article, I'll just say the county board, school board shall require a two thirds vote of all voting members. Of the county board to take an action that is contrary to an action that is contrary to an action of the CEO. And so this particular amendment is an action that is contrary to an action of the CEO which uh was brought before the board. Um and has been posted uh for as the as the CEO mentioned uh for a month.
Uh I I do want to add along with that bill, four dash four oh three A, which is right before this. The county board may not implement a policy or take any action that contradicts the day to day management and oversight of the fiscal affairs of the Prince George's County Public School System by the Chief Executive Officer under this subtitle. And in the section on page twenty four of House Bill eleven oh seven lines one through nineteen, more importantly, nineteen, list. Capital planning and expenditures is considered part of the day to day operations of the CEO.
Point of border, I'm reading from the point of the law that's right before section, it it's section four dash four oh two, that's responsibilities and powers of the CEO. It says part B, the Chief Executive Off- Officer should be responsible for. Part two says. Subject to the provisions of Title Six of this article and after a budget is submitted by the county board. And approved by the county council at the beginning of each fiscal year, the day to day management and oversight of the fiscal affairs of Prince George's County Public Schools. The responsibility lies with the super and with the CEO uh on the day to day manage- management oversight of the fiscal affairs after a budget is submitted by the county board. Um which would uh in my opinion, uh my view uh indicate that the budget uh is. The county's budget or the county board's budget and does not apply uh with the super majority rule. My opinion, again, Mr. Thomas has mentioned before that um we have different, you know, views on this, but. It clearly says that it is after a budget is submitted, the CEO's responsibilities. Are on the day to day management and the oversight of fiscal affairs after the board approves a budget.
Board Member Queen. Board Member Queen.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair. Took me a while to get on. I'm 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 kind of lost. In all this because. This was a budget chair. That actually brought this to the floor. It was moved on behalf for the budget committee. And then all of a sudden, it was saying that the chair have to make this motion and then everything else went all out of order. So. Is this still under the budget chair or are you, I'm just kind of lost.
Are you asking me?
Yeah, because you've just been going on because I mean, and I guess this is because Mr. Shelton said that you have to say the emotion when it was already. Moved on behalf of the budget committee. So I'm kind of, you know, so. Do we have a new motion on the floor? Did the?
No, we don't. We do not. I'm waiting for someone to call for the vote. The motion on the floor that I and I'm going to repeat it. Again. It is to vote on the twenty twenty three, twenty uh twenty twenty eight um. Uh CIP. Oh, yeah, twenty twenty three, twenty eight capital improvement uh program. So.
With the amendment, right? I'm I'm just just to clarify.
The amendment.
With the amendment, yes.
Thank you. That's all. Thank you.
All right, all in uh faith uh roll call. We're gonna need a roll call for this, Miss Berkeley.
Yes, ma'am. Mrs. Adam Stafford.
Hi.
Mrs. Ahmed.
Hi.
Ms. Boozer Struther?
No.
Mr. Burrows?
Hi.
Mr. Harris?
Hi.
Mrs. Mickens Murray?
No.
Mr. Montero?
No.
Mr. Murray?
Hi.
Mrs. Queen?
Hi.
Mr. Thomas?
Hi.
Mr. Valentine?
No.
Mrs. Williams?
No.
Dr. Miller?
No.
Seven I six nine.
The motion fails. Board Member Thomas, I mean, uh, yeah, Thomas.
Yeah, I I reckon I um I think we could all have assumed that that is exactly how that vote would play out. And so. Can we can we proceed forward with with uh an acknowledgement that there are there are different interpretations of. Whether that whether that vote does pass or fail. Uh I think I'm even comfortable with 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 taking a taking a now another vote, assuming that. Uh you know, many board members do are under the impression that that vote has failed. Uh and so I think we can, you know, I'm I'm comfortable with moving forward uh under that pretense, but uh with us all acknowledging that we do actually need to get a clear definitive ruling on this. Um so so if we can kind of move forward, but but understand that uh none of us can really clearly. State and the minutes should not currently reflect that this motion has passed or failed. And so we can seek a a uh an opinion that. Uh we can, we can um, we can click, we can um claim as true.
Duly noted. Thank you. Board uh Vice Chair Williams.
I move that we accept the recommendation of the CEO for the CIP budget for the FY twenty three through. Whenever it is.
Twenty eight.
Thank you, twenty eight.
A second.
It's been moved and second that we approved the uh. Recommendation of the uh CEO for uh to approve the uh capital improvement program for SY. Twenty twenty three through twenty twenty eight.
FY.
FY. Uh any discussion? All. It's called for the vote, all in faith, uh roll call, all in faith, uh roll call. I forgot. Let's do a roll call. Ms. Berkeley? Did we lose her?
Yes, you did.
No, she's here. She's, she probably has to be off camera. Would you like for me to call the roll?
Yes, but uh thank you.
Board Member Adam Stafford?
I'm staying.
Board Member Ahmed?
No.
Board Member Boozer Strather?
Yes.
Board Member Burrows?
I'm staying.
Board Member Kenneth Harris?
No.
Board Member Mickens Murray?
Yes.
Board Member Murray?
No.
Board Member Montero?
Yes.
Board Member, I'm sorry, I'm off. I don't have any more written here. Um. Board Member Thomas?
You missed Board Member Queen.
Oh, I'm sorry, Board Member Queen?
Yes.
I can hear you. I'm sorry.
Yes.
Board Member Joshua Thomas?
Oh.
Board Member Valentine?
Hi.
Board Member Williams? Yes. Board Member uh Miller, Dr. Miller? Just one moment, please.
Should be seven, six.
So there are seven yeses, four nos, and two extensions.
Sorry.
So the motion doesn't carry these eight votes, am I correct?
Uh seven.
We need nine votes. We need nine to overturn the CEO's recommendation. So it moved.
But passes.
It passes with seven because it is is in line with her with her recommendation.
Their recommendation.
Correct. But I I think I make this one point based on my my colleague, that's what Thomas's point. It it does appear a colleague that you probably want to get a. A second opinion on the on interpretation um of of this, just just because I think we're at, and I I appreciate your your commentary. Um of of two minds, I guess you would say. And so it 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 my understanding, you're gonna get interpretation in order to come to a final understanding of of what what just transpires, sir.
Yeah, exactly. And I think as long as the the minutes reflect accordingly, you know, until there is a. A a second opinion on this, I think that just makes the most sense.
Board Member Queen, your hand is up.
Dr. Miller, um, Madam Chair, I just wanted to say, um, because this has been brought to. The the vote, this board and this committee by Board Member Ahmed on several occasions. I think it's something that we do need to look up as, look at as a board. I understand that it just passed to um. Accept the CEO recommendation, but it is also our responsibility to make sure. That we're not just accepting recommendations just because they're made, and we're also making sure that. Our CEO and the staff that she has selected is being fiscal responsible over our taxpayer dollars. It was stated by um Board Member Mayor Mayor earlier that a lot of this money is county taxpayer money. And as a board, we do want to be responsible. So I would suggest that we maybe send this back to the Policy Committee. And maybe look at a policy of some sort um to look in and make sure that this is being addressed and we're looking at this responsible. So. We won't have to keep going through this year after year when it's time for this to come up.
So you're saying. As a follow up to this meeting. Because the motion did car- carry to accept this uh this year's CIP.
Yes.
So thank you, Board Member Queen. Board Member uh Mickens Murray?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh my suggestion is since the Budget Committee feels strongly. That they need that that the contingency percentages are too large. I think that they. Under their umbrella. Should have staff. Track something for you or go back a few years because Ms. Ahmed seems to be very sure. Of what she is looking for. Therefore, she needs to be part. Of this research, not doing the research, I'm not saying that, but I am saying this on it. Ask staff what you need to track something from maybe five years ago or six years ago. And I'm not saying several projects. I'm saying pick a couple. And see if if what you are are, what you are proposing. Really warrants us to do this next year when we have the CIP vote. Build your basis. That's all I'm saying. Thank you.
Thank you, um, it's uh Board Member Mickens Murray. Board Member Thomas?
In the spirit of the comments that I've made and I've heard some support around, you know, my my sentiments and in the spirit of moving on because it's seven thirty, sorry. Um I like to make a motion that um we seek a an opinion on this uh on the vote that have just taken place. From the Attorney General's Office coming from the full board.
I second that.
Therefore, you're requesting that because only the chair can make a request to the Attorney General from uh representing. This board as the board spokesperson. So am I hearing that you are requesting um. Of uh the um. Opinion of the Attorney General on this vote for our CIP or the vote that was taken to um. Vote uh for the CIP with the uh amendment.
The first.
First, the first vote only because uh the second vote takes place as a result of the opinion that the first vote fails. So.
So you just, you want an opinion on how that first vote went and what? Would you write it out for me?
Uh y- yes, um um usually Ms. Ahmed is actually better at this kind of stuff than me, but let me give it a, let me take a stab at it and say. Um I move that um as a board, we seek an opinion on the. First vote, which was to approve the CIP budget uh with the amendments included. Uh and to seek the Attorney General's opinion on uh whether or not that vote. Um which was uh seven yes and six no um was in fact, uh did in fact pass or fail.
And and I would like to add, since I second your motion, that you add. The vote overturned the recommendation for the CIA and the CEO. That needs to be a part of that.
See, that's where the confusion, I believe, comes in, um because the uh super is, uh and I I believe I stated this earlier and so did Mr. Excuse me, Mr. Shelton. The vote was the initial motion was to uh um well. The recommendation from the CEO was to approve the C uh FY uh CIP budget. However, there was a recommendation that came from or from the report from the Budget Committee. With a recommendation to um amend. The uh budget to include the um the the. What Ms. Ahmed put in the uh amendment. That. Amendment changes the um the recommendation of the CEO.
Right.
Means that. We were voting to overturn the recommendation of the CEO. And the the uh based on what. Uh Dr. Golson read, Dr., I mean, and Mr. Valentine.